Morning, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order at.
Nine AM.
Adoption of the agenda.
That West Elgin Committee of the Hall hereby adopt the agenda as circulated.
Can I have a mover, please? Bill? Michelle? All in favor? Carried. Disclosure of any pecuniary interest. A reminder to disclose any pecuniary interest of a general nature thereof. Seeing none? Complete review of operating budget. Magna? Could you please lead us through it?
Good morning, everyone. So today we will continue providing council with draft budget. Twenty twenty-three draft budget. We during last Committee of the Hall meeting, we finished the review. Last department that we went through was Conservation Authority. And we will be moving on to building inspection. So as for building inspection, the revenue seems to be, we're budgeting a little bit higher this year as we council approved fees increase of five percent. So we have captured that increase and the revenue is based on the number of building permits issued last year. So we're estimating roughly eight thousand dollars for septic permits. And eighty-seven thousand dollars for building permit. Little bit of money, five hundred dollars for plumbing permits. And septic clearance certificates, we estimating hundred dollars. We have purchased cloud-based software for, to capture all building permits. And annually, we are paying a software license fee for that software of sixty-one hundred dollars. We're budgeting small amount of money for advertising, two hundred dollars. And contracted services, so this eighty-seven thousand dollars is the contracted services, shared services agreement that we have with Township of Southold. And at the end of the year, we're, for the first time, we are budgeting small amount of surplus of twenty-three hundred dollars. And that surplus, we are planning on transferring to reserves as as you know, revenue fluctuates from year to year and we have to kind of save a little bit of money in reserves to cover deficit, future deficit. Does anybody have any questions for building inspection?
Seeing none.
Okay, next department is emergency measures. So there's only one account, seven thousand dollars. So basically, emergency measures is being shared again with the County of Elgin. And this is our portion of of that shared service for the year. Questions online?
Well, there's one through the chair. So it looks like we had budgeted that for last year as well and did not use it.
It's not that we didn't use it. Our County of Elgin did not invoice us yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Next department is bylaw enforcement. As you can see, a lot of changes this year. Last year, we had part-time bylaw officer working for us. Things have changed, our bylaw officer retired. And unfortunately, our recruitment process for the replacement of bylaw officer was unsuccessful. We couldn't find anybody. So we have reached out to tenant security. And basically, the agreement that we have with tenant security is seventy dollars per hour, two days a week. And there is a little bit of money budgeted for training of 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 a new person that will be covering vacation time and sick time. So there is, there's only one line for bylaw security, shared services. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, okay, Michelle.
Through the chair, how long is the contract with this company?
I believe it's one-year contract because this is a fairly new company. And basically, they they expanded last year, so it wasn't first year first year was, we've decided that we're gonna run it as a pilot project. And then come September, the decisions is going to be made whether we're renewing or going back to the to other options perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, everybody good with that? Next department is animal control. With animal control, we have another, we had to sign another agreement with Humane Society. Our current agreement is for the term of six months, January to June. At this point, when this budget was prepared, we were hoping that Glencoe Shelter will reopen, which is a lot closer than London location. But unfortunately, it doesn't look like they're gonna there's, nothing's gonna change for this year. So we will have to renew the contract with Humane Society for another six months.
Through the chair, so we have a placeholder for cats, animal control for cats, but we don't have a bylaws, my understanding, so is that just in case there's? Like what is that for?
So that, so the account for animal control for cats, so this was from previous contract that we had with Glencoe Shelter, Vicky Kyle. We paid extra two thousand dollars to offer her to take care of the cats. Our current contract with Humane Society does not include cats.
It was just for them to turn cats over to the shelter? Not to collect them?
Okay, yeah, because I was wondering, because we don't have a bylaw to collect them, so that's why I was wondering. Okay, thanks for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Next department is roads, and I will let Lee to take over.
Thanks, Lee.
Yeah, good morning. So roads, our roads budget is split into two separate sections. One is municipal roads and one is county roads. We have to keep those separate for reporting purposes. So this budget handles all of the work that we would do on our municipal road network. So to go through, the first line is gas tax that we receive each year. As you can see, that that's fairly consistent with past years. The investing in infrastructure is the money that we plan on spending on the portion of the Blacks Road reconstruction. Work that was being completed. That FSC roads, that is a number that, that's an internal figure. So that is work that the Public Works Department does for the other, all the other departments within the municipality. So we have to show that as a revenue on the municipal budget side, but it comes out as an expense in the other departments. License fees for aggregates, that's the different quarries, pits that we have in West Elgin, including ours. We pay a license fee each and every year, and the host municipality of that gets a share of that. So that would be Johnson Brothers, all the different pits there. That revenue comes into us and then gain off of disposable assets. We don't plan on having any this year. And then to go through the, the expense side of it, I'll just, for the new council members, I'll just run through. So if you see here, every, every line item or every operation within our budget has three sections. So the very first one here, and this is the way it works for municipal budget and for county budget. You'll see that first line says A bridges culverts, and it says wages beside it. So we break all of our operations down into three categories. So the first one is wages. The second one is machine time, because obviously we bill ourselves for the use of the equipment. And then the third one is materials. So materials is anything that hits our accounts payable. So if we pay an invoice to purchase some material or to hire a contractor to do work for the department in this category, that's where all that shows up. So the first three lines here that you can see, bridges and culverts, that's planned work on municipal bridges and culverts. The first one is wages, the second one is machine time, and the third one is material. And then as we go down the list, B1 is mowing and spraying, so that's roadside mowing that we do. It's the Frag Mities program for spraying Frag Mities on the roadside. All hits that operation. B2 is brushing, so that's tree removal, cleaning up down limbs, getting rid of sumac and stuff along the roadside. That all falls under, any tree work, all falls under B2. B3 is ditching, that's fairly self-explanatory. If we do any ditching along the roadside to improve water flow or correct drainage problems, that all falls into B3. B4 is catch basins, so all municipal catch basins. If that could be repairs, it could be just cleaning them out to make sure that there's good drainage. That all falls under B4. B5 is debris. That could be anything from us being called out in the middle of the night to go get a dead deer off the road, picking litter along the roadside. The, you know, at times when we got into assisting with the large item collection, that all fell underneath of B5. C1, hardtop wages, so that's the patching that we do. So that could be just the crews being out filling potholes at various locations. Or when we get into actually doing strip patching that you've seen on some of the township roads, where we go in and put an asphalt strip along the edge line to, to, to stop that edge line from eroding, that would all fall under C1. C2 is sweeping. So the bulk of that is in the two villages, Rodney and West Lorne. So that's sweeping of curb and gutter. But it also includes the outlying areas such as Eagle and New Glasgow and the county aprons, the aprons along the gravel roads. C3 is shoulder maintenance, so we, we don't have a lot of shoulders that we have to grade along our municipal roads. So that's what would go and hit that one. Resurfacing, we always leave a little bit in there just if we have to do a patch for a repair somewhere. But obviously, anything that we do major, like once we get into doing sections of road or whole streets in town, that's a capital project. So that doesn't fall under maintenance. D2 is grading, so that is the, that is the graders and the tractors and drags maintaining the gravel road network within the municipality. D3 is our dust suppressant. So as you can see there, our wages and our machine time is minimal. That's basically for the supervisor and a pickup to meet with the transport when they bring the loads of brine in to spread and sign the bills and direct them. But you can see there that, that third account, the materials account is the big one because that is the contract with Eastern Oilfield, which you guys saw last Thursday. And I will point out that that is at two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, that is quite a difference from what we have been paying. But as I explained last year, that brings us, it's still a good number. And it, and it just brings us more in line with what our neighbors are, around us are paying. D5 gravel resurfacing, so that's when we put maintenance gra, when we put maintenance gravel on certain sections of gravel road each year. So there again, the cost, that's our man time and greater time for leveling that gravel once it's put down. And but the big expense there is the material. And I know one-eighty looks low compared to previous years, but we still tendered for the full amount of gravel. A hundred, we're, we're estimating a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars worth of that tender amount will be put down as maintenance gravel. And the balance of that will be put, it, it is reflected under our capital job. It's, it's being used on the capital contract on Blacks Road, so it will be put under that, it falls under that capital. Then we get into our three winter accounts. So E1 is snow removal, so that's any time that the crews are out just plowing or any time that the graders are out plowing the back roads is all E1. E2 is sanding and salting, so if they're out and they're just applying material, that falls under that category. And also under, under E2, under materials, is where we capture the cost of our sand and salt that we have to purchase. And then E3, you'll see, that's just wages and machine time. And that is if they're out doing a combination of plowing, sanding, and salting. Our safety account, F for safety, is anything that they're doing with regards to repairing road signs. All of our signs fall under safety. Guide rail that we have to maintain along the roadside would fall under safety. So that's what, that's what hits that account. And we will be doing a reflectivity study this year on our signs. So as you can see, our material there, our cost is up, but that's, we foresee having to replace signs, a bunch of signs that are getting, starting to get faded. So that's why the materials are up in that account. Drain repairs here, that's if we're just doing any work on roadside drains. Our shop account is when the staffer doing work in the shop. And that could be building catch basin lids or anything that they're doing indoors there. And equipment repair, we're fortunate, we, we are doing more and more. We're doing a bunch of the, taking care of the equipment, looking after that internally. So obviously, the big thing there is wages. Machine time and material is lower, but I think that when you see what we're spending on repairs or, sorry, when you look at what we're spending on the maintenance of the trucks or sorry, the equipment as a whole, I think that it shows that the work that they're doing here underneath this account is paying off because the equipment is in good shape and it's well cared for. Road patrol, that's both ru, routine patrols that we have to do as under MMS, so that's a yearly thing. Depending on the class of road, it has to be inspected every so many days. That, so that includes that routine inspection, but it also includes through the winter time when their staff are doing additional inspections to look for weather. So it's routine and it's weather-related road patrols. The wages for admin, that is a portion of the public works supervisor. His time is split, he does, part of his wages shows up within each one of those maintenance accounts as he's doing various things in each one of those. But there's also an administration side to his job, so that's what that administration wage is capturing. The miscellaneous wages, that's the expense that we're putting out for doing work for the other departments. And then you'll see here, from there, from backhoe number ten all the way down through to back trailer number nineteen, that is what we're planning on spending on expense for those different various pieces of equipment throughout the year. So that could be everything from the minor repairs that we have to send that equipment out for. That would be license and insurance for the trucks would fall underneath those categories. Annual safeties for the heavy trucks. So those expenses are taken out of each, each piece of equipment within Public Works has its own account that we track. The invoices for them. Then training is at twenty thousand. We, we've had, over the last couple of years, we've had a high turnover in in operators in public works, a lot of new operators. And with that comes training that's required. Some of it's mandatory training and some of it's specific training to what we're doing. Certainly, things like chainsaw training. Trying to think right off the top of my head, first aid training, any training that those employees receive all falls underneath of that. And that would include, we do send, now that the COVID is over and Good Roads is having their, every spring and May, Ontario Good Roads puts on courses at the Guelph University. And that's the Mahoney courses, and then there's specific courses that our operators can take there to help them with their jobs. So those, that would be all included in that training section. Conferences, memberships, and dues. Hopefully, we don't need any staff recruitment money this year. Last year, you can see was low, but we are utilizing, you know, our website and the signs and things. It used to be that you would put an ad in the paper and those, that costs more money to do it that way. But we haven't been able to keep those costs down. Health and safety is things that we would purchase, like safety glasses, gloves, all those types of things for operators. Uniforms is their clothing that they, that they get each year. So that's anything from their pants and shirts to their coveralls. Their work boot allowance comes out of that account. So when they submit their receipts for work boots, that comes out of there. Hydrogas and water is utilities for the public workshop. Insurance, as you can see, it goes, it's going up every year at quite a steady pace. Building repairs and maintenance is what we spend on the shop out back in the yard. And then you have janitorial, phone and internet is for the corporate phones. Any small tools that they need for in the shop falls in there. Computer software and licenses, we have obviously our GPS that we system that we use on all the trucks so that we can track them and know where they are and what they're doing. So that's what comes out of that each year, that's an annual one. And then the big ones down here at the bottom, obviously, especially in the last year or two, is our fuel. So we break down our gas, our diesel, and then our colored diesel, which is the fuel that goes in all the non-licensed equipment, like the graders and the tractors and the backhoes. So as you can see, compared to two years ago in twenty-twenty-one, we've seen a large increase there. And then transfer to and from reserves at the bottom. And I don't believe, Meg, that we've been through the capital rate already, so we can skip the capital. So, and I'm not gonna go through this all again, but as you can see, when you look at the roads now, this is, this is what we're budgeting for our county roads network. So that top line under our RMA, which is our road maintenance agreement, the County of Elgin pays West Elgin a certain amount of money every year based on the number of kilometers of road and the class of road. There's a formula, and that payment comes to us throughout the year. So that's what the county pays us to maintain their road network. So that's everything from fixing signs, cutting grass, grading the shoulders, plowing the snow. All of the, and as you see, as you move down, as we move down through here, this, the way we've set up these accounts, it, it mirrors our municipal side. So when the operators are filling out their paperwork at the end of the day, they may have done the same operation, but they may have done it on, you know, four hours on county, four hours on municipal. So they're splitting their time for both their wage and the machine time each day as they do their paperwork. So that's how we know whether it falls under our county budget or whether it falls under municipal. And that number at five thirty-nine, six forty, forty-nine at the top there, Jana, the, the payment that I mentioned that we received from the county, that payment is a fixed number. So we get that money each year. We don't get any more, but we don't get any less. So if we have a, a, a good year, and, and our winter control has a lot to do with whether we have a surplus or whether we have a deficit at the end of the year. If we have a good winter like we've had this year, you know, I would suspect that we come in slightly under budget. Because I, we always try and, we, we balance this back to zero. So when I create this budget every year, I plan on using all of the money, but no extra, which I mean, is, it's impossible. But you know, that's what you budget for. And then, like I said, if you have a good winter and things go well, we can put some into a surplus that can be used. If we have a hard winter, they're not gonna give us any more. So we have to, we've set up now, over the last few years, we have a reserve set up that's specific to our county roads. So at the end of the year, if we only spend five hundred thousand, we take that thirty-nine thousand and put that into reserve so that we can draw on that on the bad years. And obviously, if we have a year that we go over, then, you know, we can, we have that available to us. I don't think there's anything here, as we scroll down through on the county side, the one thing, the one I will point out to you is under F safety, so material. Yep, so you'll see there past years, we were somewhere around sixty thousand, sixty to sixty-five thousand for, that's all of our guide rail signs. The big one here is line painting. So under the contract, we have to paint all the lines on the county roads or have a contractor come in and paint all the lines on our county road network. Past years, that was being done by the Township of Southold for us. They were handling Southold, Dutton Dunwich, and West Elgin. Last year, Southold opted not to, they were having some issues on their end, so they opted not to paint Dutton Dunwich and West Elgin. So we had to go out late last year and find a contractor that could do that for us in the fall. We got a, a good price based on when we were looking for that, looking for somebody. But, you know, what we were paying previous to that was exceptionally low. So moving forward now, there is gonna be, you know, probably a hundred, hundred percent increase. As the line painting is probably gonna be doubled to what we were used to in past years. So you'll, that's what the big jump is there from sixty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-one to a hundred and two thousand last year to a hundred and twenty-five thousand this year. And that's all has to do with that line painting that is gonna increase. That has to be done annually, correct? And like I said, that it's kind of, it's similar to our dust control in that it's, what we're going to be paying this year is not out of line with what, say, Malahide and Bayham are paying in the east end of the county. It's just that we were very fortunate over the years to have worked with Southold and got a better price. But that option is not available to us anymore, so. Any small drain repairs, road patrol there, that's certainly, we, a lot of our road patrol cost goes to the county because they're higher-class roads, so we A lot of our road patrol cost goes to the county because they're higher class roads. So we check them more often. Uh, we check them more often in the winter time when it comes to winter control. So. Our road patrol for our county road network is larger than our municipal side, obviously. And then uh, administrative overhead is just that portion, the county allows us to bill five percent. Um, of our total expenses in a year as an administrative overhead cost. So. And as you can see there, um, you know, with the extra cost associated with the line painting. Um, we are. Based on the budget, uh, we are expecting to draw from reserves this year. A small amount, but certainly this winter with the winter we've had in January, February and March, I think is going to make a difference. Here. So, and that balances back to zero. If there's any questions on either the municipal roads or the county roads, I would be. Happy to answer.
Michelle? Do you like to speak, please?
Yeah, Lee, I just had three questions in B three ditching MT. Last year you guys spent eighteen thousand dollars. And this year you have it at five. Where, what's accounting for the savings?
Uh, is that municipal?
Municipal.
Michelle?
Yeah, so B three ditching MT in the municipal, last year it was eighteen thousand dollars that we spent and this year you've budgeted five.
Um, we're going to be uh, doing, there's gonna be.
Do you want me to answer? I, I have, okay, so what happened? Um, when the budget was prepared and uh, final copy was um, published. Uh, we uh, we are still working on twenty twenty-two actuals. And it was discovered that allocation of cost was uh, done in error. That um, those numbers have been corrected even though you don't see it, but um, next. When you see a revised copy of twenty twenty-three budget, the actuals will change twenty twenty-two actuals as we are. Constantly putting through accruals, you know, uh, reclassing uh, transactions. So there's always. Uh, changes um, being recorded for uh, twenty twenty-two actuals.
Um, and then through the chair, same question, we truck number eight, last year was twenty-eight thousand and this year you've only budgeted twenty-five hundred. Or sorry, twelve thousand five hundred.
Yep. So with the equipment, uh, certainly. We budget for uh, more of a normal year. Uh, as the trucks age, we put more in each year because typically. Uh, especially at safety, at their annual inspection time, as they get older, uh, you know, they need a little bit more work. Truck number eight last year uh, had two major issues that were ones that. Certainly we can't, you know, there are things that we can't see, there are things that we wouldn't budget for. Um, so. There are years where you are, you come in underneath that and then there, there'll be the odd one as you know, as we go through. That you'll see uh, it'll be like uh, pickup number one's another example there. Um. You can see that norm typically we will budget twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred dollars for a pickup depending on if it, if it needs a set of tires in that year. Um, you know, license and insurance, last year was ten thousand while that was uh, um. That was a deer strike. We had a deer run out of the, out of the side of the road at night when they were responding to a call and ran right into the side of the truck and. It was uh, about sixty-seven hundred dollars uh, in damages to that pickup. So. You know, you'll see that occasionally where there'll be a high number in the actuals from the previous year. And that's just because there was something there that. Something happened that we couldn't foresee. So it's, it's gone over. I hope that answered your question, counselor.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
That all the questions?
We're gonna move on to, uh, we're gonna give Lee a break and we'll move on to Service Ontario. Um, so Service Ontario um, in twenty twenty-one, I think. Um, it was twenty twenty-one year when we um, revised and um, changed Service Ontario hours. We went from forty hours per week to twenty hours as uh, at the level of um. Deficit was climbing and um. And uh, we couldn't justify um, having uh, Service Ontario um. Opened uh, forty hours per week. So in order to minimize that deficit. Um, Service Ontario currently is open uh, Tuesday, Wednesday. Eight thirty till four thirty and Thursday from eight thirty to one thirty, twenty hours per week. Um, there have been um, uh, additional funding received from, from the province. Um, due to COVID. As you can see, um, when we were uh, at the peak year of pandemic in twenty twenty-one. That uh, number was really high, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars now, um, you know. Uh, pandemic is um, I think um, we're over that. Uh, period of um, of um, pandemic. So the fundings are. Decreasing. Uh, we're estimating for twenty twenty-three that we were hoping to receive. Twenty-five thousand dollars, but as you can see, that number fluctuates and it's our, out of our control. Um, however, uh, driver's license uh, commission is uh, pretty stable. Um, we are servicing the same levels of customers, even though uh, the change. Um, was made by the province that no stickers are required, but uh, customers are still. Or residents are still required to renew their licenses. So um, uh, in terms of driver's license commission and health card. Uh, services commissioned, those um, that uh, uh, that revenue is not changing and, and, and very consistent with. Previous years. Um, same with um. Uh, hunting license commission. We're hoping for twelve hundred dollars, but I, I, I think um. We may not be able to achieve that number. Um, miscellaneous revenue is uh, the um, little bit of commission that we make through the sale of um, MTO books. And then wages, so wages um, consist of twenty hours per week of our Service Ontario clerks with payroll benefits. Um, and other supplies, so other supplies is the purchase of uh, MTO books. That we um, collect revenue from. And we are hoping uh, to finish the year with a little bit of surplus of thirty-five hundred dollars. Does anybody have any questions?
No, doesn't appear so.
Uh, next um, next item is for counties transit. Uh, this um, some of you um. Review this uh, budget um, at the board meeting. So um, the very first line uh, for the revenue twenty-four seven fifty is the um. Uh, it's not really revenue, but it's a um. Uh, share of deficit with other municipalities, but it comes um, as a revenue. And um, basically, if you go to um, note one on the bottom of that department. You'll see that um, it's um, that number is calculated based on ridership. Uh, for uh, previous year. So um, Southwest Middlesex um, is the highest. Um, um. Uh, has the highest number in terms of uh, riders, uh, because they, uh, they have, uh, we are supporting two hundred eighty-eight. Um, rights in the year, then it's uh, West Elgin, uh, Chatham, Kent and Newbury. So. Total uh, deficit that um, we're um, estimating for twenty. Uh, for twenty twenty-three. Is at. Twenty thou- uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars and there is a. Shared of that um. Um, deficit um, listed. Then the next item is provincial gas tax. So every year we have to um, apply. For additional funding to uh, from the province. Uh, that number. Slightly fluctuates from year to, to year. Uh, we haven't um, done twenty twenty-two um. Reporting yet, but we're estimating that uh, funding will stay similar to a previous year. So we're hoping to receive uh, close to thirty-six thousand dollars. And then um, we have been uh, successful of uh, receiving um. Additional money for the purchase of our new transit bus. Um, we're hoping um, bus will be delivered uh, between May and June of this year. And um, small portion of uh, of the total cost. Uh, will be received from um, pro- from the province and federal government, uh, which is forty-five thousand dollars, one eighty-eight. We're estimating approximately seven thousand dollars in revenue for bus trip fees. And approximately thousand dollars for uh, special trips. Um, as for operating expenses, uh, wages of uh, one bus driver. Typically thirty-five hour work week. Um, and then um, fuel expense of fifteen thousand dollars. And then uh, we budgeted uh, five thousand dollars for repair and maintenance. Of our, for our existing bus, but I am afraid that we will not be able to meet. That budget line item as we currently are experiencing uh, mechanical issues with our bus. So um, as I receive more information, I will be um, uh, reporting that back to council. And then uh, with the purchase of new bus, there's going to be a significant transfer from reserves. Of almost ninety-four thousand dollars to cover the cost of the bus. Uh, we're estimating um, uh, total cost at hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. And um, that eight thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, that's West Elgin uh, portion of deficit. Does anybody have any questions?
Michelle, please.
Through the chair, Meg, did we, in our last meeting, agreed to put an add up for a second bus driver? Um, is the wages accounting for two drivers?
Yes, um, uh, wages, there will, there shouldn't be any impact on wages as um, basically. Uh, the second driver, um, we're not um, doubling um, operating expense or wages account. We're just uh, basically um. Um, preparing for the coverage for um, when the bus driver is away on vacation. So basically the idea is to um, go back to the, the same schedule as we had pre-COVID. Which was um, uh, we had two bus driver and they um, worked on rotating schedule two weeks on, two weeks off. So that is, that's, that's the plan of um, uh, providing uh, sufficient coverage for the transit services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, um, we're gonna go back to Lee as we're be discuss, we will be discussing streetlights.
So under our streetlight uh, section here, the first line is hydro. So that's obviously the hydro that uh. We use to operate the streetlights in Rodney, West Lauren and the outline areas. Um, repair and maintenance would be any work that we have uh, done to those throughout the year. Um, I know that uh. Hydro one now, when they change poles over, they used to change streetlights over as well. That anybody noticed in Rodney over the last few days, the south end of Rodney out by the water fill station, hydro put in. Half a dozen new poles there and the uh, the lights are streetlights that used to be, they would change those over. As they install the new poles. So now we just get a lovely letter saying the new poles are in, please move your lights and then we'll come back and remove the old poles. So there's little things like that that are going to increase that slightly, but um. That stays fairly consistent, uh, certainly with the new LED lighting that we did the conversion a few years back. And save this a lot in repairs because the old lights were getting, now it's just the circuit as we can get that, um, you know. Chew away at getting the circuit, the network, uh, redone the wiring, um, that will uh, hopefully help decrease that. Maintenance cost. Um, equipment purchase, that's if we do have to uh, purchase any equipment like relays or anything for that. And then uh, we don't plan on any capital work uh, this year for streetlights.
Can I ask you just one question there, Lee?
Sure.
Was, was there a problem with them new poles hanging, you know, when you add the flower baskets there? Um, in Rodney? Oh, and did it, do they ever get to? Done or the others checked?
Yes, so.
So the baskets can go up safely this year?
Right. So, yes, so they did the, there was an issue with the, one of the arms, um. When we put the baskets up last year in the spring, um, and so. We worked through that and uh, the, the arms, the, the pole that was installed. For the hanging basket, um, they originally did that when they designed those poles. It was designed as per our streetscape plan that was done back in uh, twenty twelve, I believe, twenty eleven, twenty twelve. And um, so the layout of the banner arms and the flower basket arm. Is consistent with what was in our streetscape plan. So that's what they had, the architect had designed back then. The, the downside was that when they did the engineering for the street lighting in Rodney, uh, as part of the reconstruction. In order to meet the RPA standard, which is the standard for illumination for street lighting. The light itself had to be higher. So I don't, I think originally when the architect envisioned what the, what the top half that pole would look like. They weren't thinking it was going to be that high off the ground. So if you remember when we first put up the hanging baskets, they were quite high off the ground. A lot higher than normal. And so what we did was we worked with the manufacturer and there. Is, there was a, a bolt-on bracket, which is a lot sturdier than the original design. And that bolt-on bracket is adjustable on the pole. So we essentially kind of killed two birds with one stone. We were able to put those bolt-on brackets. On the new poles, take the uh, arm that held, supported the flower pot from up higher. Thread it out and then thread it into the new bracket. So that we were able to lower the baskets where I think they look a lot nicer for those that saw them when they were up high. Um, and that, that bolt-on bracket is a, is a lot stronger than having it just set into the. Into the concrete. So um, that, to answer your question in a long way around is.
No, it's, it's all right, but it's answered it good. Thank you very much.
So moving on to sidewalks, uh, under sidewalks here, this captures both our winter maintenance on sidewalks. So when uh, Parks and Recreation um, goes out to uh, plow and salt the sidewalks through the winter time. But this also looks after uh, in the summertime. So we have to do annually, we do a sidewalk inspection. So that's public work staff, basically essentially walking all the sidewalks, checking the condition, looking for tripping hazards. Marking them to identify them obviously, and then scheduling to go back in and make those minor repairs. So that's why you see the wages there is higher because typically with that type of small sidewalk repair work, the bulk of it is. It's just time, right? In order to do that. And then obviously the transfer from reserves, we are planning on doing. Uh, capital work for sidewalks this year. So that's money coming out to go towards that.
Any questions, Michelle? No, anyone else? Thank you.
Um I would like to skip um sewer and water and go straight to uh landfill. I would like to leave uh sewer and water at the very end.
So on page twenty nine.
Oh, had Lee.
Um, okay, so for landfill, which is essentially, we call it landfill, but it's our environment, environmental services. So this, this uh section deals with not only operation at the landfill, but also our collection, our curbside collection program. Um, under uh revenue here, obviously, we do collect money for removing refrigerant from uh. The appliances as they come in, that's required. Um tipping fees is the, is the amount of money that is collected. By the landfill tenant for large items, commercial waste that's coming in. Um and anybody that's bringing in uh, you know, over that small allowable amount. And then uh. The. Recycling. Uh money there, London salvage is all of the uh metal that's received at the landfill. Um is sorted by the attendant, goes in the bins and then we have a contract with uh London recycling to. They provide those bins when they're full, we let them know they come and haul them out and then we receive uh. We, we pay for the transportation, the trucking of those bins back and forth, but we receive the revenue that uh is collected for that scrap. Um, the, through Stewardship Ontario, so. We're still. Uh as Jan and I have been working on this, we're still discussing, obviously, we've signed the agreement to. Carry on and provide the recycling service through these next three years of transition. Um so we will not be, it used to be that we would have to fill out a data call, which was a long. Um form every year process that we would go through, put all of our recycling data in. And then through Stewardship Ontario, we would get based on all of that information that we prov- provided them. We would get a certain amount of money back from Stewardship Ontario every year to help offset the cost of our recycling program. So this year we will get two payments instead of four from Stewardship Ontario as we transition July first. So for the first half of the year, there'll be an initial payment and then there'll be one payment in September to close, basically close us out of Stewardship Ontario. But we will be receiving funds from CMO Circular Materials who is taking over for um. Stewardship Ontario, uh but uh at this point right now, like I said, we're still working through the final details of that. So that will be both of that, it won't be just Stewardship Ontario, it will be Stewardship Ontario and CMO. Um. The Murphy's here, so that's the money that we receive as being a member of the London Material Recycling Facility. Um, we received. A portion of the revenue from that facility each year um. To help offset the expense cost. Now with London transitioning as well on July first. Um. They were successful in obtaining. Um so CMO is going to pay London or take over the uh that. Recycling facility, so. We, even though our material will be going to the London Murph after July first, we won't be receiving any revenue for it. But at the same time, we won't be paying any expense, like we always received a portion of the revenue. But we always got a bill from London every quarter for a portion of the expen- of the operating expense for that facility. So if you see here under. City of London, under the revenue side, obviously that's gone down. But if you go down two lines here to Murphy's expense, that has gone down as well. So that it, it's a wash, right? It balances out. So essentially, we're just in that for six months instead of twelve months this year. Um and then. Recycling expense is the cost of uh us receiving and transporting recyclables that are still delivered into the transfer site at the dump. Into the London facility um. And that will be part of the CMO, the contract with CMO. Uh and then just down quickly. To note, the garbage collection and the recycling, recycling collection, so that is our contract with Waste Connections. And certainly with between um inflation and fuel prices, uh there will be an increase this year. Um so we've taken that into account uh under the uh, under here, then that's the difference in from last year, last year's numbers.
Just to note to the hazardous waste day, that's the fee to the city of Saint Thomas, we don't host a day anymore. Instead, residents can go um to Saint Thomas and use their facility.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, and as Meg just mentioned there, so if you remember from last year, last spring after, for those of you that were on council, after. We had the large item collection in May last year, uh I brought a report to council just explaining, you know, the. Pros and cons associated with a large item collection program. And um so that obviously will not be running this year in May. So we have taken that large item pickup out, it just, we found that um. The program was really being abused over the last few years. Uh it was costing us a lot of money and it was, we were not able to. Uh recycle any of that product because when it's picked up curbside, when people just throw everything curbside like that. Once it goes on the truck, it's all co-mingled. So what we've done is. For this year in May, uh which I believe the date's been set, but we can get that out to you, will um. We've opted for instead having a week uh available to residents of West Elgin. That they're able to bring those large item things into the landfill at no charge. Um so we can deal with that at the land, at the transfer site, we can. Sort that all out, it's gonna mean a lot less material actually hitting the landfill and a, and a lot more. A, a lot bigger percentage of recycling taking place with that. And and it will lower the cost as well for us. That was a.
The dates are May tenth, twelfth and thirteenth. And that was heavily advertised in the garbage uh collection calendar as well as it is there as scheduled notices going out.
Um, under, and then wages here is the wages for our landfill attendant for the year. Um. Down here, grounds maintenance is the. Cost of having our public work staff um look after. Uh pushing the garbage and putting cover material on the garbage, so that's operations at the landfill that's being done by public work staff. Included there, Green Lane disposal, obviously, um most of you know that anything that's picked up curbside. In as far as garbage that's picked up curbside in West Elgin. Is delivered by the contractor into the Green Lane facility there just off of Highway four one towards London. So that is the disposal fee for that garbage that we deliver into Green Lane. Contracts and agreements is Blue metric. Um they are the environmental company that handles all of our monitoring, well monitoring and our. Uh biannual inspections and our yearly report to the ministry, um so they look after all of that for us. And then uh. I think just to, you know, office supplies is uh. The receipts that we have to get printed up for receiving waste to the landfill. So um if there's any questions there. This will be, it'll be an interesting year with uh um with the transition this year. To uh from Stewardship Ontario over to Circular Materials. Um but I think that we're in a good position, obviously with our contract with Waste Connections. Um, good until through twenty twenty five.
Michelle, please.
Um, I don't know dumps very well, but yesterday, Lee, it was quite the talk that we are no longer allowed to burn wood products at the dump. So people were suggesting that that. Would cause ex- extra expenses or for us to run out of room more quickly. I'm just wondering. If it will have any effect on our budget this year.
It won't have an effect on our budget and uh so what's happened is we are still, we. The older ECAs still have uh claws in them that we are allowed to burn uh at the landfill. Um. The, what's happened or what the problem here is, is that under that um. Under that line item in our ECA, what we are allowed to burn is clean wood and brush. Which is basically if you pick up sticks or branches in your yard or trim a tree um. That, that wood material, that clean wood material is able to go into the burn pit and be burnt. Um, what we were finding was that there was an issue with people throwing. Wood into the burn pit, it, it can't be pressure-treated wood. It can't be a countertop that's ninety percent wood with a laminate on top. Uh it can't be, you know, it, it just, it, it has to be just wood. So we are still allowed to burn, but people that are used to going to the landfill and using that service. Will be monitored by the attendant because what we were finding is people were throwing things into that burn pit that were not allowed, so um. There, there will be, there will be stuff that has been put in there in the past that is going to be landfill because that's where it belongs. Um so to answer your question, uh councillor Navakis, the, the burn pick can still be utilized. It just needs to be utilized properly what, for what it's meant for, and that's just clean wood and brush only.
Perfect, thank you.
Further to that, what is the fee associated for, say, you're, you're doing your kitchen and you have your countertop, as you mentioned, or something that isn't a real wood product? That previously people felt they could burn, but they weren't supposed to be.
So that would, if they come in with that, it would likely be, if it was just a large countertop, it would likely be treated as a large item, so it would be a ten dollar fee. The same as if you, you brought in a couch or a chair or something like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the public or any residents watching, whatever, so that we knew there was a fee associated, but we will take it. Um I did have a question uh earlier when we had, I think it's the first page under landfill. And or the top page part of it, and it was in regards to where it says. Um, like if I'm a resident looking that, at that, and it says, here is the amount for garbage collection, here is the amount for recycling. But then you get your tax bill and there's a line on your tax bill. I think they're gonna be wondering. Like, are they, are we paying for it and then they're paying for it as well? Like, I think it would be a little confusing, so can be some of the line items, and also we have a dash and then a little explanation. I'm wondering if the future it can be. I don't know, just explained a little more. Um. I would think it'd be like, looking like we're charging them and then we're getting. We have a fee, it's like, it doesn't look like it all goes into, I don't know if I'm making that clear or not, but.
I can certainly answer that, so um there has been a change um two years ago when we um offered. Uh. Garbage collection to the entire municipality as in the past, uh only um residents within um. Each and uh West Lauren and Rodney um.
Yeah, if you had a house number, you got garbage collection, nine one one number, no garbage.
So in the past, yes, so that garbage collection was um was separated. Uh to the ones that had garbage pickup and they would, you know, it was uh clearly indicated how much. Um they are paying for um garbage pickup and recycling. Um, since the change took place two years ago, uh general tax rate is paying for uh for the garbage pickup. So basically the cost, um so all costs associated with operations of the municipality. Are combined together and that's how we end up with um tax rate increase.
Yeah, so I understood that, but on the. Where it says for the fees for the recycling and the garbage pickup, like if I read that, I would think. Well, there, they have these fees that they have to pay. Like, it, it looks like it should be connected to their fee, the fees that each resident has on their taxes, like I don't know how to litigate that.
No, no.
Oh, it's all included?
It's all included, there is no separate line, there is one.
There used to be a separate one.
Yes, yeah, there is only one item, uh taxes, municipal taxes, yeah.
So is there any way to um dash collected from municipal taxes or? I'm just thinking if you read the budget and you're a resident and you're not reading a budget all the time like we are every year and all through the year. You might be a little confused about how that works.
What we can do, we can prepare uh for the next um committee of the whole meeting, we can certainly. Um come up with uh how much uh it costs per resident. Uh for them to have a garbage pickup and recycling. For information only.
On the, on the budget line?
On the budget line, okay.
We don't have to go through all that, that's staff time that we don't need to do. I understood how the process works as we sat through it. Um but I was just was wondering on the budget line, maybe they wouldn't understand, like, if you don't read it all the time, it's confusing maybe.
Okay, okay, we can uh, we can provide um description of garbage and recycling collection, how. In more detail.
Yeah, I was more meaning the budget line, I mean, it makes sense.
The, the, the two that say gar- the one that says garbage collection and then recycling collection right below it.
So that would be waste um.
So that is the, yeah, sorry, so that is the, that is the cost to have. Wait, that's our contract with Waste Connections.
Okay, I thought that was the fees collected from.
No, no, no.
Our taxes, and then that's the, the line what it looks like, okay.
No, so the, the, the top few lines there are all revenue, the ones that start, the last four digits starts with a six.
Six, yeah.
So right there is the break, so everything below that is an expense. So those two line items, the one that says garbage collection and the one that says recycling collection.
Those are your contract.
That, yes, those two numbers go together to form what we would pay Waste Connections annually for curbside collection over the whole municipality. So now that, like Meg just said, and now that we, now that everybody in the municipality receives the same service, we don't have to have those. Separate line items on taxes anymore, that's because before it was just the two villages that received that service.
Right.
So they obviously had to pay for that, now that it's. Now that everybody in the municipality receives the same service, it can be just put as a general, as a blanket.
Everyone, thanks.
Yeah, I brought the most remember that, but I'm, yeah, I just found it, the lines a little confusing on the budget. I understood how the process worked.
We can make a note on there that that is for the Waste Connections contract.
That's all I was asking for clarification on the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We finished that one? If we finish that one. Have we finished that one, Lee? So we're, we're gonna go for a five-minute break.
Okay.
We've been going for over an hour. So. We've been going for over an hour, so. Down then, uh, with me.
Okay.
Magnus, if you wouldn't mind, please. We'll carry on with the meeting right now, Magnus, please.
Okay, so the next uh, department is cemeteries, uh, there's only two line items. Um, the five hundred dollars that um, every year we budget is for um. Gas cutting at the cemetery and underground maintenance, uh, we are budgeting five thousand dollars. So last year, we um, kind of uh, cleaned up. Old uh, cemetery on uh, Fleming Cemetery. Kind of uh, cleaned up old uh, cemetery on uh, Fleming Cemetery. We have uh, we have been um. We received requests from Bacchus Page House to kind of um. For assistance in uh, restoring uh, tombstone. At that cemetery, so um, we have received uh, three thousand dollars. Uh, donation last year from uh, Bacchus Page, Page House um, towards that uh, project. However, uh, we're estimating, the estimated cost of restoration is roughly ten thousand dollars. This was um, something that um. Uh, Mayor McPhail uh, took lead on and um. With our contribution of five thousand dollars and current donation of three thousand dollars, um. You know, Bacchus uh, Page House is um, considering um, running either fundraiser or applying for grants. And contributing a little bit extra towards that restoration, so um, we're hoping that. We can finish this project in twenty twenty three. Any questions on cemeteries? Okay, um, next uh, department. Uh, is arena.
Yep, through the chair, so our arena budget here, um, the top half a dozen lines are revenue that we're. Um, estimating for twenty twenty three, so the grant from Dutton Dunwich is the portion. That Dutton Dunwich puts in towards the operation of the arena. Um, obviously ice rentals there, and we've certainly um, had a good year this year. And I expect that uh, based on the feedback that we're receiving from the users, I expect that to continue. Into the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four season, um, which is good. And then there's uh, small amounts there of uh, sign rentals, so the signs that are up through the arena and on the Zamboni. Uh, that we charge for, um, public skating was a very pleasant surprise this year, although it's not a huge amount. We did, um, we were able to, uh, at the beginning of the year, uh, through a bit of work, we were able to get all of the public skate times sponsored. Uh, by local uh, community groups and businesses for the, for the whole year, so that's nice when you, you know, that's. Money that you know that you can put in the bank and um, then you don't have to worry about the ups and downs of uh. Public skating and then skate sharpening. Um, through the expenses there, obviously big one is staff time, that's wages transferred in, so that's all of our public works. Staff that work, um, both full time and part time throughout the uh, season from September right through to uh, the end of March. Uh, to facilitate operation of the arena and um. As far as utility costs, uh, as you can see there hydro is the big one, obviously to run all of our compressors and everything. Uh, through the arena uh, for the season, um, is the large amount there as far as utilities. Insurance, like I mentioned before, is uh, you know, the same across all departments, it's going up uh, steadily every year. Then we've got uh, minor repairs to the building, uh, maintenance costs for the building that we incur throughout the year. Um, contracts and agreements are uh, things that we uh, items that we need for our compressors. That we have companies lined up for to deal with. Equipment maintenance is uh, could be equipment such as the Zamboni or HVAC. Or sound system, those types of things throughout the year and then uh. Fuel for the Zamboni. And certainly depending on uh, what we are able to facilitate as far as that capital project of that. Conversion to natural gas, um, there's obviously still a cost associated with that, but that will lower our um. Fuel costs for the use of that machine. Is there any questions on the arena budget?
Do you know?
So under Parks and Recreation, our first one, it's broke out into different areas that our Parks and Recreation staff work. So the first one here is uh, our work down at the Marina. Um, so the, obviously anytime you see that wages transferred in, that's the cost of our. Parks and Recreation staff and the work that they do there. Hydro water sewage expenses for the municipal washrooms down at the Marina, the municipal washroom at the Marina. Um, we've added a line this year for specifically for operation of the fish cleaning station. And which was opened in the midsummer of twenty twenty one. And then uh. Grounds maintenance would be uh, for public works, so when. Obviously grading the gravel parking lot down there, applying dust suppressant, um, those types of things would all fall underneath that. And then the transfer to reserves here, um, we were looking at or doing. Um, the walkway, the bridge across sixteen mile creek from the parking area to over to the municipal beach. Um, it was built back in the mid two thousands by uh, the Army Corps Engineers out of Saint Thomas. But that option, we've reached out to them and they're no longer doing that type of work. So now you're into having that done, obviously, um, it would have to be engineered, number one. And then the purchase of whether we did something that was built in place, like what they did previous to that. Um, or uh, having a new structure set in place, utilizing the, you know, you've seen those nice steel. Walkways um, that they can just bring in with a crane and set down, but that certainly is not something that we can um. That's gonna be a large expense, like a, a walkway, we've already received quotes on putting a steel bridge walkway bridge in there. Is about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand, um, so we're gonna set fifty thousand aside into reserves this year. And then um, hopefully that in the next, we. The structure itself is good, we can replace a few boards here and there, and um, you know, it's still certainly safe for people to use. But we're gonna start putting money away for the replacement, because at some point in the next few years, we're gonna have to do something with that, so. That's what the fifty thousand transferred to reserves is.
Okay, that sounds good, it's looking good for the future. Michelle, would you like to say something?
Uh, through the chair, do we share the fish cleaning station cost with the yacht club?
And I can answer that question, so in your budget, there is an extra line item listed. As you can see, there is no account number assigned to it, it's, it's an option for council to consider. As um, fish cleaning station, as you can see, is costing us ten thousand dollars annually. Uh, roughly, and um, we would like to um, approach perhaps yacht club. Uh, to help us fund um, repair and maintenance of the fish cleaning station. As um, basically the um, the fish cleaning station. Uh, benefits not our residents, but the tourism that um, tourist stack. Visit our arena and use um, uh, use the Marina on, on the weekend, so. Um, it just makes sense to approach your club and ask them for contribution. contribution towards the fish cleaning station.
Yeah, it was certainly on my list for the next board of management meeting down there to bring that to their attention and see what, what results we get from that. I'm hoping that they'll be favorable because it does benefit everyone at the end of the day.
Are there any other questions?
See you now. We'll move on.
So the next section underneath our Parks and Recreation budget is our programming section. So you'll see the top five lines there are revenue. So soccer, that's what we charge. We, that's so much a player per player for the youth soccer that's run in Miller Park each summer. Baseball is revenue that we receive for rental of diamonds. The hanging basket donations, so that's
I just wanted to say when we're at that point, this will be the first year that every basket in the municipality has been sponsored. So we just found that out yesterday, which included doubling them in Rodney. So, yeah, we, that'll increase a little bit more at a hundred dollars a basket because we're at more than twenty-six baskets. We're at
There, there'll be, there's forty baskets this year. There'll be, there's a basket on every decorative pull-down council. Rodney will have twenty-eight baskets and West Lauren will have twelve. And then municipal run programs, as most of you know, some of these programs, especially the ones being run out of the rec center, we're looking after, we're handling them as in-house programs now. So that's the revenue that we're going to receive for things such as pickleball that's being run as a municipal program. And we are, as per our fees and charges by law, we are charging that three dollar fee for people that use that programming. So that is the expected revenue from that for the course of the year. Then on the flip side, under expenses, obviously, if you're going to run municipal programs, there's going to be expenses associated with that. So we've put twenty thousand in the budget this year under expenses, and that would be for things. As most of you know, they have asked for new lines for the pickleball courts and the shuffleboard courts in the recreation center. And there are other, some other small items that we're hoping that we can utilize with the purchase, with the, sorry, the youth task team has is purchasing two new portable basketball nets to go at the recreation center. So obviously, with some extra stuff there, we could, we're hoping to get some youth basketball off the ground. So that will cover all the expenses that it's going to take to run those programs throughout the course of the year. The expenses here for the volleyball, you know, keeping up the outdoor courts, soccer, the bulk of that is for painting the lines, the soccer lines and maintaining the nets each year. And then there's a small amount in here for baseball, the tennis court. Lawn bowling, we do, we do pay a certain amount. That's each year we purchase the sand that the lawn bowlers put down on the greens to help keep them tidy. And otherwise, the lawn bowling club themselves maintains the, that facility. We put a little bit in for playground equipment. If there's any damage and we have to replace a component to that. Splash pad here, the bulk of that is water because our splash pad is not, it's a not a return. It doesn't utilize the same water. It just goes to drain. So we have that water that goes through. So the bulk of that is for water for splash pad during the summer. Flower baskets, that's our cost to have the baskets planted. And for the baskets themselves, now the baskets that we're using now, we can get three to four years out of those baskets. So once we make that initial purchase of those baskets, then the cost associated with that, we're with the hundred dollar sponsorship for the baskets, we are covering our costs a hundred percent for those. So which is, it's great. So the Christmas parade, it's that title. In past years, we always put five thousand dollars aside. And half of that was for the Christmas parade in West Lauren that was run by the optimist. So they would submit in invoice or their expenses each year, and we would cover up to twenty-five hundred dollars of those expenses. And the other twenty-five hundred dollars was for, as you mostly remember, the municipality used to handle the parade in Rodney. So since the night market has come on, well, we did the festival lights during COVID. So that was the municipality kind of spearheaded that with the help of a bunch of the service groups in Rodney and then the idea of the night market. So essentially what we've done now is the, we still allow the optimists in West Lauren to submit for the parade here in town. But we've reached out. We feel the night market is a great thing for Rodney. I think the two complement each other. If you want to see a parade, you come to West Lauren. If you want to go to Night Market, you go to Rodney. And so we've reached out and we've offered that, that addition, that other twenty-five hundred dollars to the organizers of the night market, the same thing. They just submit their expenses and we'll reimburse them for that. Canada Day. I've upped that a little bit this year to seventy-five hundred. We won't, we won't be having, there won't be anything for civic holiday down at the Marina this year. So we've put a little bit extra in the budget for Canada Day expenses and that bulk of that is for fireworks that are used on Canada Day that are done by the, by West Elgin Fire Department. Rodney Fair, that's a standing one each year. That money that, that's the municipal portion, that money is used for, the bulk of that money is used for the bleacher rentals for the fairgrounds and for the lighting that they use, the rental lighting. And then wages, like I said, there again, that is our public works staff time. And then at the bottom there, you'll see the transfer to reserves. So we are planning on a multi-use pad. And we are certainly, we, we know what Dutton Dunwich spent on theirs about three years ago when they built that. So certainly, you know, we're looking at somewhere around a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand for that. So we are putting money aside. We put fifty thousand set aside last year. We're going to set fifty thousand aside this year. And hopefully, if everything works out in the twenty twenty-four budget, you'll see that actually that multi-use pad in there for construction.
Thank you very much.
Let's get a drink.
Any questions, anyone?
So
Sorry. Oh, go no, carry on.
So Parks and Recreation, so this is, the next one is, this is the rec center. So so under revenue for the rec center there, that's rentals of the facility throughout the course of the year. We, we may be slightly high with this figure now. We've just been informed that Dutton daycare will not be running the day camp out of the rec center for the summer. So typically, they've had it for the whole facility for July and August. They are going to keep that out at Albrow School for the summer. They, the downside to that for them, like they said, is that now they have to bust the kids twice a week into the pool because they always could walk them from the rec center over to the pool each day for that. They're going to have to transport them now, but obviously they have their facility out there and it's brand new. So it was best for them to just utilize that. So it does, although we lose the the bit of revenue that we receive from them for the rental for July and August, it does open the facility up to other things to possible rentals for those two months through the summertime. So I don't, I don't see a large variance here with this number. Hopefully, we can cover that off with programming during the summer. Like I said, there again, wages is our, is our park staff to go in, they, they maintain the building, they keep it clean, they make sure that tables and chairs are set out for functions. So they spend through the, through the year, they spend a fair amount of time over there. Utility costs. Building maintenance, we have a bit of work to do. The HVAC system, there's some insulation on that that needs to be repaired this year. So that's what that amount is for. And then capital, so as we spoke there in the capital portion of last meeting, we are having, now that we've got the new roof on the main part of the rec center, we're looking at making repairs to the ceiling.
Hey, any questions on that one? Do you know? Parks Recreation and Pool.
So with the pool, we've shown a little bit more as far, we're estimating a little bit more as far as revenue this year, and that is because I'm happy to report that we do have five guards this year. And so we are going to be able to offer a bit more in the way of programming as far as lessons is concerned. So I, I think that that's going to equate into a bit more revenue on the revenue side, but we are budgeting a little bit more as far as wages too with the extra person. Wages transferred in is our park staff that maintain the pool. Utility costs, I think everything's, you know, everything's pretty straightforward there. And obviously, as we talked about in the capital meeting, there, we are still working at trying to resolve the issues with the, the water under that liner. So hopefully, we can get that rectified. The cheap route and not the expensive route.
So you're hoping to keep the pool open all season? Hopefully.
Correct. Yep. We're gonna, we're going to the repairs that we're going to do around the railing pockets is going to be done in late May, early June. And that prior to the, to the season starting, and then, you know, we'll go from there and see. I think certainly if, for some reason that that doesn't resolve the issue, I still think that we can go through the year this year. And it doesn't seem to be getting any worse. So we can get through the year this year and then start making plans. Once the pool closes at the end of the season, then we'll have to reassess and decide, you know, when we're going to do that liner.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I see under pool chemicals, like everything, the amount has gone up fifteen hundred dollars while really a little more, you, you estimated six thousand last year and it was just over seven. So have you already been given the information about how much the chemicals are going up or you're obviously anticipating, because you've done this for years and years, it's going up. I just wonder if you have the information now or are we getting it at some point?
We've, we have spoke to supplier, it's going to, prices have leveled off. Obviously, if you remember last year, a lot of the companies for your backyard pools were having a hard time getting chlorine.
Yes.
So certainly supply and demand rate, but they, they feel that that problem, that was a supply chain problem. And from what we understand from the supplier this year, that that seemed to, is balancing itself out. So hopefully, you know, there's always going to be with inflation, there's always going to be a small increase, but we don't anticipate as big a jump this year as there was last year.
Okay. And then that kind of leads to my second question, this touch of supply supply chain. So for the liner and tile repair and the other pool maintenance repairs you're doing, you're not having good, have a problem getting supplies or materials for that? You don't anticipate that? I just know there's lots of things we're still not able to get in this world right now.
Yeah, well, certainly, the, the repairs that we plan on making to the pockets this spring can be done. We've already spoken with companies regarding that. And then the, if we have to replace the liner, that's not going to be something that we're going to be able to manage this year. So you know, certainly we'll have to, that'll be part of twenty twenty-four's budget or possibly twenty twenty-five, depending on what the total cost is.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions, as I can see. Fox Recreation Operations.
So our operations budget for Parks and Recreation captures all the things that our staff, public, or sorry, our Parks and Recreation staff do essentially when they're not busy working in the arena. So spring, summer and fall. The rentals here at the top are revenue. So we have pavilions and we have the scout hall here in West Lauren now. So that's revenue from the rental that we're expecting. Then getting down into the expenses. As everybody knows, the different recreational facilities that we have in the municipality, we always put a little bit of money aside in that just in case something comes up. So you've got Joe's Bush, the old jail, scout hall. Training for our staff, they will be doing, a couple of our park staff will be doing chainsaw training here with public works coming up shortly as they do use saws for trimming in the parks and whatnot. So they require that same training in order to be able to do that. Our wages is, is, is our public works, or sorry, park staff for the time that they're doing this work. Uniforms, I forgot to mention in the arena, so the clothing and uniforms for our park staff. We do split that. Part of that comes out of our municipal parks budget and part of that we put towards the arena operations to balance that out. Insurance for our different recreational facilities. It's the same. It's like I'm like a broken record when it comes to insurance, but unfortunately, that's the way it is. Just looking down through here. One thing that was added in there obviously was that Recreation Master Plan, and I think speaking with Meg, that that's going to be is that capital item or I guess it shows. Okay. So certainly, like I said, that's, that's everything that, that's everything that we that's all the operations of our staff. So whether it be cutting grass at the different parks, doing the garbages in town, you know, maintaining any of those facilities, like cleaning in the old jail or picking up stuff in the, on the pathways, etc. That's all stuff that gets done through Parks and Recreation. Anybody has any questions on the operations?
Okay, Bill.
Through the chair, Lee, on the page two there, there was quite a significant cost in twenty twenty-two for the Christmas lights. Is that the new lights in Rodney? Is that what that cost?
Page two.
Under capital.
Oh, yes, under capital. So that is that forty-two thousand is the new Chris, the new Christmas decorations for Rodney West Lauren. And so we have set aside some money there under twenty twenty-three, under that same capital heading. I know there was some talk around possibly decorating the big tree out here beside the complex at, for the holiday season.
Yeah, for a tree lighting ceremony to have something on the day of the parade if they were interested.
Yep. So certainly there's some money in for that. And then we'd also been looking last year when we purchased the decorations for Rodney West Lauren. With, with West Lauren not having near as many poles here in town, there is the ability on the main, on the big poles here at the intersection that we could do a Christmas decoration that was larger in size because the pole's a lot higher and it's a lot sturdier. So there's an opportunity there maybe to look at putting, getting for new decorations to put at the main intersection here in town.
Nice.
Okay.
Through the chair, I have a question. So I think it was just in Rodney because of the street renovation revitalization, I guess, that we had. So our lights in there are on all the time in Rodney, correct? So had we put anything in the budget in regards to maybe wiring or is it even a possibility? I know we discussed it way back, but I can't remember what concluded, the conclusion had been.
Yeah, we did look in, we did look into it. It's not as simple as just putting them on a timer, so to say, because of the way they were wired under the original construction or the original, it's, it would, it would take It's it would it would take more and. We spoke with the manufacturer of the lights to find out with the LED lights now exactly what type of draw there is. And the the payback on trying to do that to uh convert that so that they were would shut off during the day. And come on, um you know, because in the winter time. Uh even if they were on a dust of dawn, they're gonna be coming on at five o'clock and they're not gonna be going off till. You know, seven or eight o'clock in the morning, right? So that that savings of having them off for that eight hours through the daylight time, the fact under the old with the old lights. They certainly used more hi- a lot more hydro, but these new LEDs um I mean. It's a it it would, there wouldn't be a payback there to um to convert them over.
No questions?
Yeah. Just just on that note, I've heard comments as well uh about the lights being on and um them continuing to be. A presence on the main street in Rodney past snowfalling. Um and again, I think like anything else, um effective communication um uh will will assist us. With letting folks know that first of all, their LED um uh cost wise, it makes. It's it's okay for them to be on all the time, especially on those cloudy foggy days, it actually looks quite nice. And that they're not actually Christmas lights, they are. Seasonal lights, so you know, it is appropriate for them to continue to be on until probably very, very soon switching them off, so. Again, just I think effective communication will help mitigate any concerns and complaints that the community or questions the community might have about that.
I've been calling them winter lights and after yesterday's freak storm, that's appropriate, I believe, so.
So I guess through the chair, just to just to expand slightly on um what councillor Danning said. Um when when we went out for this RFP, the companies that we spoke to said that. Many, many municipalities and places now are are they're going away from the Christmas themed lights. To a winter themed light so that they can stay up longer and they don't look out of place. When you have the little drummer boy still up in the middle of February, right? Um certainly, this is with this winter, the way it's been, we just really haven't had a lot of snow, so. Even at points through January and February, it looked like uh April and May in downtown Rodney, so of course it does. Make a difference when there's snow on the ground and and people are still in that winter mindset, but. Um we had planned on having them down just before the uh March break, but uh. Currently, we're still relying on our electrical contractor to put them up and take them down. So with the storms that we've been having, they were having a hard time scheduling getting here to take them down, so hopefully. It isn't the budget this year to purchase a lift for our so that our own staff are able to do that type of work, so. That would be kind of my thinking is that going forward, they would go up, you know, just before the night market. Um or before the parades in the night market, before the the Christmas events start, and then they would come down sometime in early March.
Through the chair, um so earlier when we had a line item for Christmas parade, and now we have Christmas lights. So I was leaving it when it said Christmas parade, but I wondered if we could put like um just rename the line items.
Holiday.
Yeah. Holiday or winter, winter, winter parade. Seasonal parade, I just know we have a lot of uh people from different backgrounds that are in our parade and different things and. I don't know, I just think it'd be interesting if we maybe renamed it. I don't know what other people think.
Okay. Actually, the lift, I I like the idea of the lift, it it's going to be a payback too over a period of time, so I think it's uh. Be a grand tool to have. Okay, Lee, thank you. Glasgow, I thought Glasgow Trailer Park.
So. Um for Glasgow Trailer Park budget. Um as you can see there, uh like I said, the the those top five line items are all expected revenue. We are, we do have a couple of people or we have had some interest in the uh food booth at the park this year. So we are finishing finalizing the RFP to get that out and uh hopefully we have somebody in there. And then you've got your seasonal fees, uh revenue from the transient camping through the summer and then. Uh revenue from the laundromat and we are looking at a slight increase because. Through our fees and charges by law, if you remember, we've raised it now to three dollars for both washers and dryers, the use of washers and dryers. And then uh. On the uh on the expense side of that. Um we are gonna be having, there is gonna be a slight increase or there's gonna be an increase in garbage collection this year. Uh as many of you have now heard, uh our park supervisor um who. Looked after that as part of his job duties, he was obviously paid for that in the past, but he's not returning to the park this year. So we're um currently getting pricing from our contractor waste connections to handle that for us at the park. Um wages is for the two staff members uh that work at the park throughout the course of the year from mid-April till early November. Certainly there again, a lot like the arena, hydro is our biz- our hydro is our biggest expense. At the trailer park as far as utilities go, certainly a lot of uh. Air conditioning, um hot water heaters, uh all that stuff that goes on at the park that's utilized at the park for the seasonal sites. And transient as well. Um sewage expense, we do have to put uh a new control panel on one of the uh sewage beds. There this year, so that ten thousand is for the purchase of that new control panel and the installation. And then also. A bulk of that is for that, and then obviously there's uh costs associated each year with just uh maintaining the system in general, there's four separate. Collection systems out there that we have to look after. Grounds maintenance is uh so that one would be. Anything that we do as far as trimming trees. As you know, we're planning on uh cleaning up along the lake bank there. Um this spring before the park opens, so that expense will go towards undergrounds maintenance. And then any thing that any uh work that are. Public Works or Parks and Recreation or actually utility staff, anything that West Elgin staff. Um because our utility staff help with some of the plumbing. Uh issues out there, our park staff help uh usually in the spring getting things up and going, and then certainly public works if there's. Uh any drain repairs or pot hole patching through there, so all that stuff kind of falls under that grounds maintenance. Uh administration expenses, what is what we bill the parks budget each year for. Our staff time in managing, um you know, putting out contracts, all of those types of things associated with the. Administration of the park. You know, equipment maintenance could be things as you know, simple as bearings in the lawnmower. Type that those types of expenses to keep the equipment that we have out at the park uh running properly. Postage and couriers for sending out contracts each year. I don't think uh certainly that fifteen, those two capital items that we spoke about uh in the capital budget. Are shown there at the bottom.
Michelle.
Lee, I had just a quick question about the capital expenses. The stairs, is that something that can be put off? Are there quick fixes to it?
Um yeah, the stairs is uh it's something that's been on the radar. But it's they're very similar to the pathway leading across sixteen mile creek to the municipal beach, so. They are made of pressure treated lumber, um certainly over the last few years. We do inspect them on a regular basis, but typically before the park opens. Um we give them a good thorough inspection and if there's any boards that are in disrepair, those get swapped out, so. Certainly, um they can be made safe to utilize uh for this year if that's something that. Council wished to defer.
Uh would you be, would you be able to put together what that would cost as opposed to replacement?
Um the costs associated with uh. I mean, I've been down, I've been out and up and down them a couple times already this spring um in. As we were looking at the uh brushing contract there, and uh you know, I I would say that. You you're not a big ticket expense. Staff time and the lumber and everything, we're typically somewhere between, you know. You're you're a couple days at the very most, so you're probably somewhere around two to three thousand dollars. Um so it's not a, you know, it's not a big, it's not a big ticket item.
Okay, thank you.
Bill.
So through the chair and and further to that, then in the event that we were able to uh defer um a complete reconstruction of the stairs. And do the repair work, uh so this goes to uh to Magda. If we are to defer that that capital project, will that impact the um the the budget in a way that will? Uh help reduce the increase of the tax rate uh to the community.
Through the channel, um for Glasgow uh Trailer Park um is treated as a separate entity and basically. Um operating costs and capital costs are covered uh by the users. Uh so um this has, this is a completely excluded from our um um municipal budget. So it has no effect on our tax rate increases.
It's self sufficient.
So that if we did do the repairs, that four hundred thousand dollars is sitting in reserves.
Yes.
I see, thank you.
Hey, Michelle and Jess, sorry.
Through the chair, um just a couple of small questions I had, so the wages that you have listed there, I know we're advertising for a trailer park supervisor. Um if that position um should not be filled for some reason, and our staff has to do it, the wages would still reflect.
Yeah, um I would say. Certainly, I I don't think we're in a position, we need to. We need to fill those positions in some form, whether that be um increasing. You know, maybe making them not as much of a full-time position, maybe it's more people with less hours per week. Um but certainly, at this point right now, we don't have within. And I would suggest that, you know, it would be Parks and Recreation, but we just don't have the capacity. With our full-time staff to look after that park, so one way or the other. Um you know, it's not like if we can't fill that position, we're just gonna put that on to one of the internal departments. The the capacity is not there, so we we we're gonna need to fill that spot.
Then the other question I had was um. Just a small thing, but the postage amount is really high, it's just under a thousand dollars for last year, eight hundred and something. And then the office supplies, is there any way that we can go or give the option to some of the um? Trailer park residents of doing email or anything, it would bring those down.
We do.
The tiniest little spot, we already do, just like our water bills and no one really takes advantage of that.
Majority are, yeah, that's not because they have to sign a contract. Most of them, I think we have six that do it.
Yeah.
Out of a hundred and forty-three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Contracts are mailed to all the residents of Trailer Park.
And then so the rest of that postage and office supply amount. Um probably mostly postage, it's just the contracts that that's covered under, or is there other things?
And any kind of correspondence that um last year uh we. Uh besides contracts, we were sending reminders to the trailer park residents of for um. Uh insurance submission and um unpaid fees or payments, so there was a few reminders.
Okay, thank you.
And the office supplies as well would be um, you know, having the uh the transient camping. Right, the the paperwork that they have to fill out when they reserve, when they book a spot and pay for it, so there's having those forms all made up and everything. So that's all included in that as well.
Well, thank you for looking after the bingo hall and the tree trim, I'm sure when they come back, they'll have a little smile on their face.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna.
See anyone wanting to ask a question, so can we carry on, please?
Okay, so we're gonna move on to Rodney Library. Um the uh revenue line item that you see is the revenue from um County of Elgin. Um the entire building is um um. Covered by um County of Elgin revenue, and as you can see, um there we're not expecting um. Any major repairs. And we are planning on um finish the year with significant surplus of ten thousand dollars. That surplus is being transferred to reserves for the future renovations and and capital projects. For that building in particular. Uh any question?
Questions on that one? Being none.
Okay, uh next one, West Lorn Library or um basically this building complex. Uh here in West Lorn, um so we have um the operating expenses are being split three ways. Um one third uh is covered by our municipality, the other third is covered by employment services and. Um and um the third partner is County of Elgin that um pays um for the rent of. Um uh of the space for the library. Again, um we are not anticipating major expenses, last year we repaired the roof on this building. There is still, I believe there's, we're still dealing with a small leak. On the library side, hopefully we can find where it is, uh unfortunately for the last two or three years. Uh we're unable to detect uh where the water is coming from, but um again, um. A small surplus of um sixty-three hundred dollars will be transferred to reserves at the end of the year.
Any questions on that one? In, oh, so.
I don't have a question, I'm just wondering for public or anybody who's gonna watch this later, if you can speak to the janitorial line, like I know why it went up, but. Maybe we should speak to it publicly why it went up.
Yes, so uh janitorial expense is quite high, and the reason for it is um we have in the past. We had a part-time employee um uh providing us with this type of service, unfortunately. Um since September of last year, uh we no longer have um uh that employee. Um and we had to outsource janitorial services to a third party. Um unfortunately, that kind of service comes with um. High price tag and uh but unfortunately, we don't have a choice.
The building looks absolutely amazing, I see his truck parked out there getting ready to clean at nights and hasn't looked better, so that's. At least we have that stable service now.
Absolutely.
No more questions on that one?
Hey, we're gonna. Planning, we're gonna move on to planning, so again, another um different year for planning department. In the past, um municipality of West Elgin employed full-time planner, that position was shared with um. The township of Southwood, as of July first of last year, uh we lost full-time planner. And um at that same time, um. Uh township of Southwood decided to um. Um. Uh cancel shared services contract with West Elgin as um their um. Uh planning um and development has increased significantly and they were able to uh support that department. Through a full-time position, unfortunately, our numbers and volumes have not changed. And we had no choice but again to outsource that position to um uh private consulting firm. So um under uh wages, you and benefits, payroll benefits, you see um nothing. But under contracted services, this is uh the estimated fee. Um that uh we're expecting uh to see by the end of the year of sixty-six thousand dollars. Um that uh we're expecting uh to see by the end of the year of sixty-six thousand dollars. Um we are finishing our official plan as well. There is gonna be another, we're planning on spending additional twenty-five thousand dollars. That money will be transferred from reserves uh to cover the cost of the official plan. And um.
Any questions on planning?
Hey.
Seeing none?
Uh.
Economic development, please.
Economic development, um not too many changes, however, um. This year, I, there was a, there was an idea uh from council and from the uh economic development. A committee, one meeting that we had so far, um the idea was on rebranding. So um I um. I thought it would be a great idea to put that money into our budget as we have reserves. Um that can certainly cover that cost. And uh besides that, uh there is a cost of advertising. Uh those are um annual subscriptions to um. Um uh tourism and um Economic Development Magazine. And there is a small um charge for uh membership fees.
Okay, any questions on on that one? Anyone? Seeing none? Drains?
Drains, um again, um so the number that you see on the revenue, um. Um partial um cost of employing um drainage superintendent is covered by OMAFRA. So we are expecting, um uh we, every year we apply for that grant. So we're expecting for in twenty twenty-three, we're expecting approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. Um we're budgeting small amount of um money for administration fee that pertain to drains. And basically, uh operating expenses consist of payroll. Um uh wages and payroll benefits for um one part-time drainage superintendent. Um. And a small amount of money for mileage, um cost of um phone expenses and postage. Uh we're also um budgeting thousand dollars uh for the use of our municipal vehicle. So um there is uh one truck that is being used uh among many different departments. So at the end of the year, we allocate at the cost based on number of kilometers driven. And. Does anybody have any questions for drains?
No, seeing none? Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have a five-minute break right now.
Okay, and after the break, we're gonna uh go through water and sewage department.
Okay. A five-minute break. Okay, well, resume the meeting again and um we're going straight to water, if you wouldn't mind, Magda, please.
Um so water department budget, um. Uh basically, that um budget is based on um our residents' consumption. So um every year, we take the average um cubic meters consumed. And that's how we uh develop um budget for water department. Uh last year's uh water consumption uh of our Westalgen residents was um. Approximately three hundred fifty thousand cubic meters. Um penalty and interest uh revenue, that's um late charges um. Uh that we um impose on our residents uh when um. Payment is not received in time. Uh we're budgeting approximately seven thousand dollars for administrative cost uh for change of occupancy. Uh we charge sixty dollars um um to change um information uh for each resident. And water revenue residential, so that uh five hundred thirty-two thousand dollars is based on. Three hundred fifty thousand cubic meters uh consumption. Um we keep a residential and non-residential uh revenue. Kind of separate, but overall consumption is uh um three hundred fifty thousand cubic meters. Bulk water station, twelve thousand dollars of revenue, uh this is um. This was just a projector, projected number, as we don't really have. Um a good number for the new uh bulk water station that we have opened back in September, October timeframe. Um I, we anticipate increase in our revenue as at the bulk water station is available for everyone. You don't have to be Westalgen resident, you don't have to register, as long as you have debit or credit card, uh you can draw water. From the water station. Um for uh there's also, we're um budgeting twenty thousand dollars for new water services. If the request is received uh for the new um water extension or service. Um that revenue will be captured there. Um we also charge for um water to disconnect and reconnect water, it's a sixty-dollar charge as well. Uh typically, um this um uh water department is busy um at the beginning of the season. Um April, May timeframe, when seasonal residencies are um reopening. And then again, in the fall, October, November timeframe, we were residents are asking to uh disconnect the water. Uh for the winter. Um fire hydrants, so this is basically, this is um. What we do, it's an expense on fire department side, but revenue on water department. So basically, the idea is to um um spread the cost of uh fire hydrants. Um repair and maintenance, um. Through um through the general tax rate, um uh water, um. Residents that are just on water and are um contributing to uh water revenue should not be paying for fire. Fire hydrants are, fire hydrants are available and benefiting the entire municipality, so the entire municipality should be. Uh covering the cost. And then uh flat charge, so besides um cubic meter rate that we charge our residents, there is a flat charge. Um bimonthly flat charge associated with it, and uh this is uh anticipated um revenue for the flat charge, five hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. As for operating expenses, um Lee, would you like to go through it?
Yeah, I can, um. So uh vehicle expenses, we currently have two vehicles within the public works department that we uh. Or sorry, utilities department, which we maintain, um work that's done by. Uh our utility staff or uh s- sorry, our pu- public work staff when they assist with. Um utilities is uh under broke down underwater main repair and maintenance and hydrant repair and maintenance. And so, and that could be also uh work that's done by outside contractors for that type of work. Uh wages, there is our uh utility staff and the time they put in. Um. Briefly looking down through there, and then obviously you see the same things at the bottom there that you find, that we have in all the other departments, our health and safety. Our uniforms for our utility staff and then uh the um. The utility cost there is associated with the building at the uh water tower in Rodney, where our utility staff work out of. Um insurance, like I said, there again, that's the same thing, the old broken record of it increasing. Um. There's some minor repairs uh that need to be done to the, to the shop at the uh water tower this year. Um so we've uh included those in building repairs and maintenance. Janitorial is just uh hand towels and small items that they use for the washroom there. Um. Meter repair and maintenance, so if we have to go in, if we have uh um. A meter that's damaged or is not working correctly, and we have to go in and replace that meter. That falls under and usually we'll catch those during the uh reading process. That falls under meter repair and maintenance. Um. Looking postage and courier, we know is a big one. That's obviously water bills being sent out. Our contracted services is um, Aqua. And that's uh, what they charge us to maintain the water system in West Elgin throughout the course of the year. Um, and then Mag, do you want to talk about the tri county?
Uh, sure. So uh, uh, water expense is uh, the cost of water that we have to uh, uh. Pay to the tri county as well as to uh, other municipalities. So there is um. Um, we are reimbursing uh, Dutton Dunwich and Southus Metal Sex for um. For our residents' water going through their lines, so that's the, the expense covers all that cost.
And then certainly the last one there is our fuel and as we've seen uh, over the other departments, um, but the price of gas uh. And the two vehicles that within utilities that has gone up um, considerably in the last year and a half.
So now I would like to uh, move uh, to, uh, can you open my PowerPoint presentation, Jenna? So I would like to move over to water rates.
Sorry, it's coming. Very sure, let me just.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so um, in front of you, uh, you'll notice, uh, I listed um, current, our current water rate. Um, right now is dollar sixty six per cubic meter. And um, the revenue that I just reviewed uh, with council. Um, is proposing uh, a slight increase, well, not slight, but maybe significant increase. Um, of nineteen cents per cubic meter, so um. We're proposing dollar eighty five per cubic meter. Um, and the reason for it is um. Tri-county cost of water is going up by ten percent or eleven cents. And in order for us to keep up with inflation and um. The increasing cost of water, we have no choice but to um. Pass that increase on our rate pairs. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, at the same time, we also charge flat rate for uh, water service. Our current water flat rate is at forty five dollars and sixty two cents. Um. Proposed increase is um, at fif- if fifty one dollars or difference of five dollars and thirty eight cents. Um, if you, next slide, please. So if you look at the uh, typical water bill, um, that water bill is based on. Average consumption of eight cubic meters per person. Um, average family of four would uh, consume thirty two cubic meters of water. Uh, currently at dollar sixty six. So their consumption would roughly equal to fifty three dollars and twelve cents. Plus, they're responsible to pay flat rate of forty five sixty two. So their total water bill. Uh, roughly would be ninety eight dollars seventy four cents for two months or forty nine dollars thirty seven cents per month. Just for the cost of water. What we're proposing is um. Uh, an increase to a dollar eighty five per cubic meter, which uh, that would bring their uh, uh, consumption. Charges um, up to fifty nine dollars and twenty cents. Uh, with the flat rate increase of uh, to fifty one dollars. Their total water bill would, is being proposed to be at hundred ten dollars twenty cents. Per two month, per sixty, sixty one day uh, timeframe or. Monthly fifty five dollars and ten cents, an increase of eleven door, um, an increase of eleven point six percent. That's just for the water.
Can, any questions on that one? Chair, please.
Through the chairs, so Magda, hypothetically, we don't do anything, we don't raise rates, what would be the ultimate effect?
If we don't raise rate, uh, we're um. Our uh, transfer to reserves. Would be minimum or typically this year, um, uh, we would have to uh, cover. Uh, our capital expense would in, our transfer from reserves will increase. And at the same time. We'll be having less money in our reserves uh, to cover uh, future capital replacement.
So.
We can't afford that.
I was gonna say, so in the long run, it would just end up costing us on our tax bills.
Absolutely.
Okay, Teresa, please.
Through the chairs, I'm doing the math correctly over our six months of billing because we bill by week, by monthly. It's an increase of sixty eight dollars and seventy six cents with this example. Am I reading that right?
Yes, roughly, yes. Any other questions?
You know, I, I just look at it and nobody likes to increase things like that, but you have to always prepare for the future. And we really don't know what's gonna happen with the future if we have to replace a water line or something like that. And, and then we're gonna be really stuck. And like Michelle said, then you have to put things on the taxes and that's not. So I think it, it's, it's usually friendly. I, I see no way uh, uh, of going without some increase. Teresa?
Yeah, I've just had a lot of residents lately trying to tap into the different programs through hydro and uh, and bridge. Um, because it's. April thirtieth is coming up, they haven't paid their bill all winter because they can't pay it, not that they don't want to have heat. Um. And they're having to tap into those programs and I just can't imagine. What they would do if they had to have any sort of, people are live, literally living paycheck to paycheck. They're not in good shape at all. So any little bit is absolutely. Um, yeah, so I don't know what to do. I know it doesn't look like a lot on a piece of paper. When someone gets that bill in the mail, their heart sinks. And you give them the examples that we've used over the years. When there is a bit of a water issue and they're like, well, that's not my case, that's not what it looks like on my bill. They bring us their bills and no, it's a lot more of an increase than what we've projected. So I'm just really, really worried. I do understand uh, Council of Akas and Deputy Mayor Lethem's. Points about, we're just gonna see it somewhere else then, so. Get ahead of it with some education. I'm not sure what we can do, but um, something to think on, maybe not make decision today.
Anyone else? Yes, Mike.
Um, just um, one um. Type of information, so we are projecting uh, where um, to our reserves to, at the end of twenty twenty three to be at. Eight, roughly eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, as you know, eight hundred thousand dollars for uh, any water project. It's not enough to even begin any work. Um. In the past, we uh, we had two uh, major um. Infrastructure upgrades done. Um, we have um. Kind of lowered uh, reserve levels. Those two project. Uh, cost was close to a million dollars. Now we're investing money in um. Uh, in efficiencies and, and in software, so um, I know that our residents are struggling. Um, and, but it's important for us to invest money in insufficient software and. And leak detection because, you know, uh, two months, not, they're not getting a water bill for two months and. There has been a situation where uh, there was a what, that residents had water leak, they ended up with, you know, huge water bill. Um, but uh, they were not aware of it, so uh, we're investing money in, in, in software and um. And equipment that will help us, you know, to detect those leaks right away when they happen. And um, inform the residents. So unfortunately, uh, things like this cost money, um, but in the end, I think it will benefit our residents and, you know.
Yeah, certainly a protection.
Mm-hmm, and offer them protection, that's right.
Chris?
Through the chair, um, so Dun Dunwich has finished their budget. I'm not sure who else around our neighboring. Areas um, have finished their budget. Do we know if they raised the rates or what's happened there? Because everyone always, residents always compare themselves to their neighbors and the other municipalities.
I, I haven't heard anything, but I can bring um, that information to the next committee of the whole meeting uh, with. Um, neighboring municipalities informations, rates and flood charges.
Okay, so. That all for the questions on, on that one. It's always unfortunate when things might have to go up. So um, can we? On? What, please?
Uh, the two vehicles that this utility department use, the age of them and. Like, they're in good prepare or are we looking at something for reserves for that?
Um, no, I don't think we have to put anything into reserves for that. We're uh. The, there will be a vehicle, uh, one of those vehicles that will look at uh. Um, upgrading here sometime in the near future, but uh. In past week, there's a, there's an opportunity sometimes to shift vehicles within departments, um, so I think we're in good shape.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next one, Rodney Sewerage.
So um, Rodney Sewerage, um, revenue again, it's based on uh, water consumption. So we're estimating um, almost hundred seventy thousand dollars in um. In revenue. Um, as well as two hundred, almost two hundred twenty five thousand dollars um. Uh, in flat charges um, billing. We are also anticipating um, seven hundred thousand dollars, so it. We indicated it as a, as a revenue, but that's seven hundred thousand dollars that you see under uh, Green Stream intake. Is um, the grant money, um, and at this point where um, we have two grants. Uh, one is Green Stream intake, uh, which um. That grant was, uh, we have been approved back um, two years ago for the refurbishment of uh, Rodney. Sewerage. Um, as well as we have um, allocated um, OSIF money. Um, um, to um. Uh, to help finance uh, that project as um, Green Stream. Um, intake one grand would not cover the entire cost um, of the refurbishment of Ro- Rodney sewage system. So then operating expenses, um, we have uh, no control hydro. Water and insurance. Taxes are also allocated. Property taxes are allocated to Rodney sewage. Grounds maintenance, uh, very minimum um, grass cutting around the lagoons. Software license, so this is the cost of our uh, Keystone uh, allocation of our financial software to Rodney Sewer. And for sewer maintenance, um, plant is very old, um, there are minor, minor repairs um. Are being done consistently, so that twenty five thousand dollars hopefully will cover. Um, the cost of minor repairs before the refurbishment takes place. Contracted services is the uh, contract that we have with Ontario Clean Water Agency. And transfer to reserves. We're anticipating of transferring ninety three thousand dollars. Um, to reserves, but at the same time. With um, with the project um. Rodney sewage project um, starting, we're planning on um. Taking money out of the reserves for the purpose of refurbishment of three hundred thousand dollars. And we are planning on spending one million dollars this year and that um, one million dollar. Will cover uh, lagoon dredging. Uh, only and taking care of uh, phlegmitis because, and, and that actually started it um, a couple of weeks ago. Um. Can we go back to uh, PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
So with that being said, uh, we are proposing another increase. For Rodney, so rate increase for Rodney sewage, uh, our current sewage rate. Is uh, set at two seven, two dollars and seventy seven cents per cubic meter. Um, I'm proposing two dollars and ninety one cents per cubic meter, which is an increase of fourteen cents per cubic meter. Rodney sewage has um, no money in reserves. Uh, unfortunately, um, there is um. The, there's just not enough users in Rodney to cover uh, the cost of um, sewage operations. Uh, we have absolutely no choice but to keep on increasing the sewage rates in order to. Uh, set a little bit of money aside and, and cover, you know, the capital replacement. At the same time, can we go to the next slide, Jenna? At the same time, I am also proposing. Um, flat rate increase of a dollar and thirty eight cents. So current sewage flat rate is set at seventy three dollars sixty two cents. I'm proposing a slight increase uh, to seventy five dollars. And now just uh, to put it in perspective, um. This, this is what um, um, our Rodney residents, um. This is typical um, sewage bill that they would receive um, every other month, so again, um. That estimate is based on eight cubic meters per person uh, for a family of four. So um, and it's based on water consumption. So uh, their typical sewage bill would be um, eighty dollars and sixty four cents for um. Based on thirty two cubic meters of consumption. Flat rate of seventy three dollars sixty two cents for the total sewage um. Um, um, charge of hundred sixty two dollars and twenty six cents. What we're proposing is um, with the increase I just mentioned. Uh, consumption would go up to ninety three dollars and twelve cents. Flat rate up to seventy five dollars, so the total. Cost would increase to a hundred sixty eight dollars and twelve cents. Or eighty four dollars and six cents a month, which is an increase of three point six percent.
Questions, please.
More of a statement, I'm not a math gal, but I can, you know, figure that out. And um, so if you live in Rodney. Because we know what he used to say, don't have enough toilets to flush, right? Had some more toilets flushed, the rate would go down, what he used to say. Um, so if you live in Rodney and your sewer and watering up with, rate would go up with these uh, it's this information given us, Magda. I have um, per bill, so every other month, bimonthly, you'd pay approximately seventeen more dollars based on those. That's okay.
All, you know, nobody wants to see rises, but again, with the sewage, we have to keep in compliance. Sewerage Works is getting old. Sewage works is getting old. And. We, we need, we, yeah, it needs the upgrade and it's something we're almost compelled to do, so. Uh there's really not much to op- option on this one, so. Uh I think that's the way we have to go. Anyone else? See no more questions. So can we move to uh Westlawn Sewage, please?
Okay, um Westlawn Sewage, again, um same idea, just uh different rates. So sewer billings are estimated uh to two hundred thirty uh eight thousand dollars. Same with the flat charge of two hundred eighty one thousand dollars. Uh we're, as for operating expenses, um again, uh utilities and um. Taxes, um a little bit of ground maintenance as well as um software license allocation. Um, uh Westlawn um sewer was um uh refurbished um three years ago. Um unfortunately, when we finished that project. We completely ran out of money and we had to borrow um. Close to two hundred thousand dollars. That loan is coming to an end this year, so um you will, as you can see, we uh. That principal uh left is at two twenty two thousand dollars. That line item will be gone as of twenty twenty four. With the grant money that we have received and a little money that we had to borrow. Westlawn sewer is in much better position as uh Rodney, number one, there is uh more. Residents, uh there's more toilets to flush. And they with, yeah, with the proposed increases, uh they are um able to um. Save a little bit more money a- and put them in reserves, uh it's um. As for uh contracted services, that's another um fee from Ontario Clean Water Agency. And as you can see, um Westlawn Sewer um is able to transfer hundred thirty five thousand dollars to reserves. Based on uh proposed um sewage rates. Um but we're gonna go move on to a proposed to um Westlawn sewage rates now. So proposed um. Sewage rate increase for Westlawn is um. At two dollars and seventy cents from two dollars and sixty five cents per cubic meter. An increase of five cents per cubic meter, so not a, not a um huge increase this time. Um and as for the uh flat charge, Jenna, could you go to the next one? We are proposing a dollar forty uh increase. In uh flat charge, so our current, current rate is at seventy dollars sixty cents. And we're proposing uh an increase uh to seventy two dollars um per billing. Typical Westlawn sewage bill, what you would s- see on um average uh for a. Average family of four, currently, they are, they would be paying eighty four dollars and eighty cents. Um for um. For consumption, water consumption as well as seventy dollars and sixty cents for uh flat rate. Which equals to hundred fifty five dollars and forty cents. Bimonthly or seventy seven dollars, seventy seven dollars and seventy cents uh per month. Uh what we're proposing is um to um increase um. Of five cents in consumption, which will bring their bill up to eighty six dollars and forty cents. And flat rate at seventy two dollars, so their total bill, uh bimonthly bill would equal to hundred fifty eight dollars and forty cents. Or seventy nine dollars and twenty cents per month, an increase of one point nine three percent.
Okay, any questions, please?
So now I would like.
See any questions at all, so.
Okay, no. So I would like to take counsel to uh, cause uh mo- a lot of residents are getting um. Water and one bill for water and sewage. So um here's uh what, I'm sorry if, looks like uh. Slide is not lining up, but uh so uh currently. Their bill, um their monthly bill. So for Rodney resident who is on water and sewage. Um we are um what we've proposed, we're, we're looking at. Overall increase of six dol- six, six point six four percent. Or four dollars and forty four, uh s- four dollars or thirty three cents per month. Per month, I, I, per month. Four dollars thirty three cents for um for resident that is on water and sewage overall increase.
Any que- more questions on that?
And next slide, so for Westlawn resident who is on water and sewage. Um we're projecting an increase of uh five point six nine percent or three dollars and sixty two. Cent per month.
Questions? Any none?
Uh no, you gotta stop there. So I will, I apologize for the slide. I will, before uh the slide gets posted on the internet and uh of course council will receive a copy. I will clean that up, so you can clearly see the options. Um so basically, that's all I have for water and sewage. Um at the last committee of the hall uh meeting, council uh wanted to know. What uh county rates are, uh rate increases are, so um I reached out, next slide, Jenna. I've reached out to the county and basically, so. Based on our current budget that was presented to council, we're at four point two three percent. Uh tax increase, which equals to on two hundred thousand dollar assessed value. Equals to fifty two dollars and ten cents. Um annually, county's uh budget was passed, I believe, last Tuesday. Um their um rate increase was at three point seven five percent, which equals to forty seven. Dollars and seventy six cents on two hundred thousand dollar assessed value. So that's where we're at.
Any questions at all on that? I don't see any this time.
We don't know the schools one yet.
I, uh, there might be a slight increase, but.
Yeah, does anybody need a break?
Uh I, I think we're just about done.
We have all the grants, so do you want to continue, or do you want to delay grants?
Um, that's council.
We'll take a quick great break now and then we'll go straight onto to grants. No.
Once we go through. So.
Back, start the meeting again. And we're going to grants. Jenna, can you please lead us through it?
Sure, I'm just gonna share the screen. This is a summary of the grants submitted, the grant requests submitted um by each organization. So traditionally, we've given twenty five hundred dollars to the Mother's Day Road Race for the West Lauren Optimists. Um, they also have, so that's the in cat, that's the cash amount they have requested. They have requested also some waiver of fees uh for the use of the arena. Um, for their Mother's Day Road Race, the use of the pavilion, the way in Miller Park for the Easter Egg Hunt, the Community Appreciation Day. Um, and they'd also like us to waive the use of the pavilion and the Scout Hall for part of their car show. So that's their request. Uh, we've had a request from the Quad County Support Services uh for their youth transition program. Um, at thirty five hundred dollars. Uh, that West Augen Community Health Center for Community Flu Clinics, the waiver of uh nine hundred dollars and it's so that's for two clinics to be held at the Recreation Center um with the option of more as required. Um, the West Lauren Horticultural Society, uh their bedding plants, we have traditionally give them money for their bedding plants because they have less hanging baskets in West Lauren. And they provide the receipts for the cost of that and it's up to twenty five hundred dollars. Um, the plant sale for um, they want the waiver of the use of the arena, so it's a one full day. Plus the half day set up the day before, and that's like the first weekend in May. Um, the Lawn Bowling Association, I know we do give them money in our rec budget for sand. This is different. This is to help with the cost of their fertilizer um and other grass maintenance that they need. Um, and they do provide receipts uh always uh for that money. Uh, the Kiwanis Club of Rodney has asked for five hundred dollar donation to their literacy program. And the Four Counties Health Services Foundation, um they've started a new medical equipment campaign. And they've requested uh six thousand five hundred for this year. So it gives us a total of eighteen thousand um out of monetary requests and one thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars in waiver of fees. Um, I believe Magda has thirty thousand dollars in cash set aside. The waiver of fees, is that captured as part of that? No?
It's the um, so the thirty thousand dollar um consists of uh cash outflow.
So, I guess it's just at this point um is, do you want, what do you, are you interested in doing with these requests? Um, do you just want, there is, we always make sure there's money left in the budget for future requests because they do come in throughout the year. Do you want to go in by individual requests or would you like to discuss them as a group?
So just, just one question, if they're giving receipts. Um, then we only pay what the receipt says. So even if it, if they want two thousand or whatever the number is, and they give us one for twelve hundred, that's all we pay.
Yeah, we pay up to the amount awarded. So they, they give us the receipts that usually their club gets them all together and they add them all up and get as close as they can to the twenty five hundred or whatever, submit the receipts and then we issue the payments back.
Okay, Drusha?
An awkward question, but I've had this from residents in the past. So we give a grant to a horde society who then goes to a business outside of this area to purchase their bedding plants. So um it's kind of a sticking point with a few residents, so I'm not comfortable giving conditions to people, but is that something we could just nicely ask? Or I'm not sure how that looks.
They all have preord- they will have preordered that stuff and they have a they have their preferred suppliers.
Like?
We, we can't.
I can see you point on that.
Yeah, I can.
Well, someone brought it up to me and I had noticed the invoice years ago when we got one, um but but yeah, and then other people had brought it up to me and it just was awkward because you can't really tell uh you know, we can't dictate to them where they can and cannot do business.
But ha- have we got local people that could supply them? One hundred percent? I don't know that. I, I know we've got local people, but I don't know whether they could supply that product. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none?
Are you comfortable with these amounts then, just moving them through in as part of, if you're comfortable with this amount now and leaving the thirty thousand in the budget, we will um, once the bud- the budget's approved, we will allocate this money and go from there.
And the fact is nearly everyone has asked for grant money on this. Is, is a really big item for the municipality. They help us out throughout the year in various things. So I think we have to look at it seriously and consider it.
One thing too, actually just before, I'm not sure if anyone asked a question. Traditionally, we've also had an additional request from the Rodney Fair Board. They did not submit a grant request. We have an agreement with them and instead they'd like to renegotiate the agreement. Um, I've heard some basic conversations with them. It's fair. They're not asking for cash. That's not what they'll be asking for in their grant request or, or their, this agreement. Um, it's more you know, use of buildings kind of thing. And uh so Dan and I've had an initial conversation and at some point we'll come back to, to it with you guys, but it's, it's that's why if you're wondering where that is, there is no, they've done pretty well. They, they think they're okay without more cash than what we already give them.
So would you, do we just look at this, at this meeting?
Yeah, so this will be our one look at it. If you're comfortable with it, it'll stay in the budget as it is and um move forward. Um, that's kind of the way it works. And then once the budget's approved, that also approves these grants.
Any further questions? Seeing none?
Oh, then we're back.
Magda?
Through the chair, through the chair, so this is um end of our twenty twenty three uh budget. Uh, we were able to go through every um department in great detail. Um, are there any final questions or comments that um council would like to make?
So through the chair, um the, the timeline, uh what is next is uh this will be the opportunity to ask questions and then also um the community will have an opportunity to review this and provide their feedback to us. And then will there be an opportunity to share any of that feedback we may or may not receive back to council before final approval of this budget?
Um, yes, through the chair. So the plan is to make um small revisions to uh the existing uh budget that was um proposed today. Um there is a one line item that I would like to bring to council's attention. Under administration, we had um under um strategic plans, service delivery review and pay equity review. We, that line item consisted of seventy five thousand dollars um budgeted amount. Um, council indicated at the last committee of the whole meeting that they would like to have organizational review done as well. Um, so now knowing what we have in plans. Um, what I would like to do is uh number one, move on with the strategic planning. And then at the same time, move on with pay equity review. And then put organizational review as well. As far as service delivery review, I would like to defer that to uh twenty twenty four as to be honest, we will not have enough time to get all those reviewed that was done this year. So now it just makes sense once the strategic plan, pay equity and organizational review is done. Uh, do the uh service delivery uh review at the very end. And that number, so um cost for organizational review is roughly thirty five thousand dollars. Um. That number should not change, seventy five thousand dollars that we should be able, I we might be able to uh find uh to come under the budget, uh but um I would like to have a little bit of wiggle room in case um um request for proposal come a little bit higher. On the other hand, under parks and recreation. Under uh master recreation plan, we are um budgeting. I believe it was forty thousand dollars. Let me just double check. Six. Operations. Oh, it's, yeah, so oh one seventy six fourteen, Jenna. Yes, so we budgeted forty thousand dollars based what I'm hearing. Um the cost of developing master recreation plan um is double of what I've expected. So I would like, I would like to increase that amount to eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, through the chair, going.
So through the chair, uh I, I guess I just want, Michelle, uh Councilor Navakis was the one who proposed the uh uh the, the staff route, uh staff follow through exercise. Um, I'd just like to hear from her if she's comfortable with that um being deferred to twenty twenty four.
Michelle, would you like to speak?
Uh, through the chair, I, I might have misunderstood Magda. I thought she was taking out something else and putting the organizational review in this year.
Yes, so going back to under administration, we had three projects um listed. Um, so again, uh it was a strategic planning, service delivery review and pay equity review for the total of seventy five thousand dollars. Um, now that it was brought to staff's attention to do an organizational review. Uh, instead of adding additional um amount to um to the plans that we initially had planned. I um I suggest that we remove service delivery review and replace it with organizational review and not change the uh budgeted amount of seventy five thousand dollars for twenty twenty three.
Um, through the chair, I think that's great. I think late, uh we mentioned it a few times that training is definitely costing us a fair bit of money each year, uh just with high rate of turnover. So I think removing the service and putting the organizational review on will hopefully help us next year's budget.
And just to point a procedure, um you won't actually be able, wouldn't have been able to change or defer that uh study, like not that, like not the, the one that was approved at council without a motion of reconsideration at a council meeting.
There is any, any more questions on that? Magna, is that, does that answer your questions?
Um, so um, it, the only um um suggested that I'm looking for from council is what would you like me to do with uh master recreation plan for this year?
Drusha?
So Calz and Navakis and myself are on the record. Um, we've already had a meeting and discussed the master recreation plan. Um, just in not in great detail, but that, that was the hopes for this year. So um I think it's important, like I hear a lot and lot and lot about we don't have any rec programs, we have nothing for people to do. Especially since the pandemic, people are really wanting to engage more and be healthy and be outside since they're in our houses for three years. So in my voice viewpoint, it's important to still stick with that. But I'd like to hear from Councilor Navakis if we could.
Michelle?
Um, so through the chair, Magda, it wouldn't be more than eighty thousand dollars?
At this point, I don't know. Uh, it shouldn't be more than eighty, but it's gonna be definitely more than forty.
Um, and if we were to do the recreation plan, what is the duration of a plan like this? Uh, what are we projecting out of for this plan? Is it four years, eight years?
Four year, three to four years.
Okay, I, I think I need to sit on that for a moment. Eighty thousand dollars for a three-year plan. Uh, I know how important it is for us to have a recreation plan, but I am also then wondering if the committee itself can guide something. It just I would like to sit on this one for a bit.
Okay, I just wanna bring um a little bit more information to council attention. It's not just the recreation. This plan covers uh facility, um all the facilities. Um uh there is um different studies associated, our capital uh investment in those recreational facilities. Um, there is um there is uh not, the, the plan does not um cover just the recreation portion. But also our, um, you know, capital investment in um in our assets, recreational assets.
Yeah, so we need more information on that, don't we?
I can bring, I can certainly bring more information on the, on master recreation plan to the next uh committee of the whole meeting.
Sorry, through the chair, Lee, could you speak to your departments and the benefit a recreation plan may have?
Excuse me, well, I guess certainly um a recreation plan, there's gonna be a cost associated with the plan itself. And that's uh you know, it's no different than us giving you a um capital budget that's forecasted out five to ten years, right? It's uh there's the initial cost associated with the plan. It does give you kind of a, you know, a playbook or it, you know, it, it helps guide. That's, that's what the master plan's meant to do is is to help council make a decision and, and guide them on future steps moving forward. And from there you can put together that long range forecast. So it's, you know um staffing levels. I mean, certainly the, the cost of the master plan, it's not going to end with the cost of the master plan. The master plan is just the beginning, right? So I mean, if you're, you have to be, um if you're looking to move forward with the master plan, you have to be willing to make that investment with the rec, you know, with the recommendations of the master plan. So the last thing you want to do is spend eighty thousand dollars on a master recreation plan and then shelf all the recommendations because A, you know, we can't afford them or, or B, you don't agree with them or C, there's not the public interest there to support um those recommendations, so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to add, um that master recreation uh plan will be, uh there will be a public input. Um, so basically uh the idea is to create plans, so we're not uh running in circles, uh trying to develop programming that there is absolutely no interest in our community. We've done that in the past. Um, we have to have a clear vision of uh of councils and what the community is interested in. And without, you know, uh the appropriate surveys, um public input, uh we're unable to, to move on with anything.
Correct, I can see that. Anything else?
Yeah.
If you've got anything to say.
Yes, um Jenna, I just mentioned that, I believe it was last year when we last year, uh we did um a small survey on recreation. And the response rate was um around one percent. I'm not sure if this is going to change. I mean, um at this point, um uh there is thi- things like this cannot be done, but our internal staff, we need a consulting firm who is very knowledgeable and experienced. And that could, you know, the assess uh the interest levels as well, uh make assessment on our uh facilities, our uh capital investment, um and combine that into uh um recommendations uh to council. So uh in terms of um 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 assets and our, our uh recreation facilities, that plan will cover um, you know, um asset kind of will help us with asset management plan as well. Uh, cause the uh time range uh will be from now to uh twenty years, but um as far as programming. I believe we're gonna concentrate for the term of this council. And maybe a little bit beyond.
Okay. Okay. Through the questions. Joe, please.
The chair, I think that what both Magda and Lee and then Jenna pointed out is that it could be quite possible that we go through with an eighty thousand dollar plan and have one percent of the population participate in said survey. And then we are tied to it for the next three years and we will still hear complaints anyways because it's not what the other ninety nine percent of the population wanted. So I I just, like I said, I I want to think about it. And I know we mentioned it at the rec department and rec is a really big deal to me. But I also think that this is reflective of, isn't it two percentage points on our tax base at eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, that's correct.
And I I think, um, I don't think maybe Lee meant it, but it is a little scary not getting into a plan and being held to something that may not have the support of the community.
Through the chairs. So council of Akas, what I'm hearing is maybe you're uh thinking, what I'm thinking is that the rec committee could come up with their own little plan of what that looks like and get input that way.
My feeling is that we have a good group of people around the table and that it wouldn't be putting stuff on staff and that maybe next year. Um, there may be more money in the budget where we could relook at this. I just I think with increases of water bills, looking at what the county has put forward, it just, I'm hesitant to spend eighty thousand dollars on a plan that we may not get buy in from and that may not be actually what the rec committee puts forth. I I think we might get better results just doing it internally on the committee.
Yeah, that's the direction I was um thinking that uh would be something to explore. I do remember when I first came on council in twenty eighteen. We asked about a plan. It's escaped me right now that a lot of money had gone into, not eighty thousand, but still quite a bit of a budget had gone into. And we asked what happened to that plan from the council before us. It had been shelved and never used at all, never looked at. It had collected dust. So I'm just, you know, it just wasn't things got busy and they just didn't get to it and didn't get implemented. So I'm just worried that not I'm saying that we won't interpen- interpen- in implement it. Sorry, it's getting a long meeting. Um, but um, we do have a great group. We have a great vocal group who are totally community based and be great to hear what their thoughts were too.
Okay, yeah.
Um, through the chair to uh councillor Novakis, you had um at the last meeting, I forgot to bring this up earlier. Um, the Canada Cultural Space Funding you had asked us about. So I did, we did the research into it um towards the old town hall. Um, whether we could apply for it. So we looked into it. Um, what is eligible is con- construction and renovation of any arts or heritage facility. Um, it has to be related to professional arts or heritage programming. So I think we could tie the heritage programming in because we do have that small area that was designed for like a museum type thing. Um, they can pay out for engineering, interest on short term financing and systems to approve accessibility and mobility. The other interesting part of that is they actually will also, one of the other things you could apply for is a feasibility study. Whether it's worth do doing the renovations. I know that's a, this has been a huge issue within the two municipalities, but the reality is the support of it is limited to fifty percent of total costs. Um, and you have to have two thirds of the funding already secured prior to, and it you have to do the work within twelve months. So we need, yeah, that we would have to have basically a full on tender ready to go before they would even, we have to submit the tender as part of the application process. Um, and we need the proof of funding resolution supporting the event and approving any funding prior to applying.
Okay, Michelle.
Sorry. So through the chair, thanks, Jenna. I I think it's something maybe then to keep in the back of our minds if we get closer. I I mean, it's good to hear that it's out there. It does seem that there is some money. Um, when I was looking at it, I do think that it is one of the grants that does allow you to use other funds from other grants. So we do have some money in there, but like obviously now is not the time.
No, probably not. Where else do we go now? Magna, if you had anything else?
No, I.
Anyone else? Questions from anywhere?
Oh, um, so that being said, um, you're aware of the revisions that I will be bringing to the next committee of the whole meeting? Um, what is council's um um, ideal, ideal uh proposed uh rate increase? Are you comfortable with four and a quarter? Or what's your thoughts?
Through the chair, so the um, the uh, the conversation here about um, uh, the the rec survey being uh extracted from this, does that impact the rate?
Yes, yes, it does.
And how much does it uh adjust things?
Just a little bit over one percent.
Okay. So then, based on that, um, my my feeling is that uh uh clearly the costs of of everything have gone up. Uh, and uh the way for us to to be responsible to the community is to find new levers, uh, not to necessarily decrease the cost of tax this year, but to ensure that going forward uh increases are very responsible. And I feel like the way to do that is with a robust strategic plan, official plan and a a collective desire to uh continue to grow the community in a responsible way so that more people are using the infrastructure that is in place such as water and sewer, which and then in turn will help to um spread the costs of services. So all that being said, um, for what it's worth, uh, I I appreciate the review that we've gone through the last couple uh council of the whole meetings. It's been uh for me as a new councillor, interesting. Um, I've learned a lot, um, had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions. So uh, based on what uh this review has been, to this point, I am comfortable with what has been proposed.
Thank you, Bill. Michelle.
Um, there were a few items that I would want to discuss before moving forward. I think that there are some items that we could still be tweaking to get this down a little bit lower. Is that next meeting we discuss them?
Or we can discuss them now. Yeah. This is ready.
I I guess just off the top of my head, the fifty thousand dollars that we have set aside for renovating this building, this area itself, I'm just wondering if we can push that off. I'm trying to think, I I I know that it doesn't save us anything on the final tax rate, but I I do question the four hundred thousand dollars right now for the stairs if we can perhaps put that off to next year. I'm I'm thinking also of staff time and energy in getting quotes for that project. Maybe better spent when we don't have as much staff in a different time. Lee could correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I think off the top of my head, that's all I have. I would like to look at it again. And I could send questions to Magda if that works.
Yeah, would you, you you'd be okay with that? You'd answer any questions anyway?
I can en- answer any questions council may have. Um, just a question for council. Um, what's your thought on municipal um council chambers renovations?
I'd like to ask Lee a question. Is there, if it's put off another year, what could happen to the building? Or is it something that could be put up?
Oh, this is uh, this is just uh the cost fifty thousand dollars just for this room. Um, basically replacement of chairs, desks, um, small renovations to um
Okay.
this room.
Then I can see, just looking around, that we can manage for another year, surely. It should, it shouldn't like if the roof was going to leak or something like that. That's why I asked that question. Okay, uh, Michelle.
Sorry, Magda. And then it would be something I would like to chat with Bill about. I am wondering about removing the ten thousand dollars for the branding for this year and putting it back in. Um, sitting back down with the Economic Development Committee and then refocusing it perhaps on in the following year. But Bill, I'm open to what your thoughts are there.
Yes.
That money did come out of reserves. So is it going to the tax bill?
There is no financial implication for that, but we can certainly defer it to the next year.
Anything?
Through the chair, just um to uh to add to uh what councillor Novak has said about the economic development. Uh, subject to it not necessarily impacting the uh the tax rate um in an adverse way. Um, we can continue to talk about um the validity of that money and how it would be used, but uh to my, further to my point earlier, my my statement, um, I think now is certainly the time to consider um making such investments in economic development to encourage more people to look at West Elgin as a place to do business and uh to live um in in because I feel like that is one of the best levers right now to help to uh mitigate the the future increases in taxes.
Yeah, Michelle.
Uh, in it, I I think it's that I would like to definitely focus on that. It's just in doing some research. My feeling is that we may not actually get to branding and hiring someone and uh on initial research, I think ten thousand dollars is probably about thirty percent of what we would need for the total budget. So I think if it's not costing us anything, it's to leave it in there. And then Bill, you and I should probably sit down and kind of maybe roadmap how we get where we need to be.
Sounds like a plan.
Is there anything else?
And anyone else can think of anything that we should ease upon, of course. That is, it made a little start, hasn't it?
Yep.
So we'll calculate that for us next meeting to see where that takes us.
Yes, all the revisions will be made for the next uh committee of the all meeting on April sixth.
Okay, everyone, if we've all finished, have we?
Yes.
Okay. At that case, I'm going to call for adjournment. And have a mover and second.
I need to read the resolution. The the West Elgin Committee of the Hall hereby adjourn at twelve forty three P M. Uh, to meet again at nine A M on April sixth, twenty twenty three, or at the call of the chair.
Mover. Bill, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much.